Come to order, please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Present.
Mrs. Mash?
Ms. Mash is excused tonight.
Mr. Matthews?
Present.
Mrs. Mueller?
Present.
Ms. Papas? Mrs. Solis?
Present.
Mr. Tally?
Present.
Six members present.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Again, thank you for joining us and welcome. Just so everyone knows, the board did have a test meeting just prior to going live to ensure that our technology was working. We did not conduct any business during that time, but simply we're checking technology for about 10 minutes before we went live. We want to begin tonight with a few announcements and thank yous. And one, first off, want to say thank you to our Nutrition Services. Nutrition Services has delivered 93,000 meals in the last nine days to our students, which is just remarkable. One of the things that we were most concerned with when we thought about shutting down our school district was the inability of our students not to be able to come to school and eat. But our Nutrition Services has done a fantastic job in ensuring that our students still have access to quality food and nutritious food. And so we thank them a great deal. We want to recognize some people tonight, this evening. Three Greeley Evans School District, six seniors who will graduate in May have been notified that they will receive the prestigious Daniel Scholarship. We want to congratulate tonight Ms. Rayanne Renee Mosqueda of Greeley West High School, Oscar Emmanuel Perez Luna of Greeley West High School, and Maya Marie Lippert of Northridge High School. More than 2,000 students applied for these Daniel Scholarships, and the foundation awarded 212 to students in Colorado, New Mexico, Wyoming, and Utah. Over the last 14 years, 101 District Six scholarship scholars have received this award. And so we want to extend our congratulations to those three this year. Finally, we want to just say thank you to everyone who is, who can, in our community, continues to serve us. As was noted, Ms. Mash is out tonight. Ms. Mash is a nurse and is doing double duty these days. And so we thank you for, thank her for her service. But thank all of those in our community who continue, our doctors, our nurses, our medical personnel, our first responders, those who work in our grocery stores, and those who are responsible for producing food, our JBS workers, that all of those who are working in our community, who continue to work to keep us all moving along. We want to encourage everyone still to take this virus seriously, though. So if you're not essential, your job is not considered essential and you're not going in. We highly encourage you to stay safe and keep our community safe. Continue to social distance, continue to wear masks when you go to the park, when you go to the grocery store. We all have a part to play in this, and we want to continue to ask everyone to do their part in serving not only our school district, but our community well. We're now to the portion of our meeting where we hear people desiring to speak before the board, and I don't believe that we have anybody tonight. And so we're going to go right to our work session report. Ms. Crane, will you give us an update, update the public rather, on what we did actually two weeks ago?
March 31st, our work session, Board of Education President Michael Matthews began the work session with comments and updates from board members. Dr. Pilch provided an update on the emergency response to COVID-19. The board discussed the draft of a communication to the community, and that concluded the work session.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. We're now to our superintendent's report. So, Dr. Pilch, would you give us your report, please?
Thank you, President Matthews. And I won't report on COVID and our work around distance learning right now, as we have in our work session later, an update on our response to COVID-19 and the work we're doing around online learning and distance learning. I do want to share that earlier, well, late last week, I had a listening session with our school nurses. So these are the folks who are our trained nurse consultants. They're either, either have a bachelor's or a master's degree in nursing. And, you know, their work is very different right now than it is when we are in brick and mortar school. And so their work right now is reaching out to families and making sure families have what they need, especially those families of our children who are the most medically fragile in our school district. And so a huge shout out to them and the work they're doing. And as you mentioned earlier, that our own school board member, Mrs. Mash, is out there on the front lines as a nurse. And our nurses said to me the other day, they said they are just so grateful and thankful to be doing the work they're doing in the school district at this time and so appreciative of the children and the families in our district. And they talked some about their concern for their colleagues in the field who are out there working in healthcare settings and their worry for them. And they feel very grateful to be working as school nurses right now and providing the services that they're providing. So I wanted to share that with you all. And also, like you, President Matthews, congratulations to those Daniel's Fund Scholars. So proud of those students. And, you know, every year I've been superintendent, we've had students who are Daniel's Fund Scholars, and that is a huge, huge deal to be a Daniel's Fund Scholar. And so congratulations to those students. Also tonight, we will recognize Brenda Arrozó, who is one of our special education teacher assistants. And as we recognize her, you know, a huge shout out to all of our teachers assistants. Their work is very different right now, too. And we're asking them to do some work and work in ways that they haven't been asked to in the past. And they're engaging with students and reaching out to families and helping us to stay connected to the students and the families at this time. So thank you to all of our teacher assistants, and it's exciting to recognize Brenda tonight. Congratulations in advance to her. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Next item is to approve an agenda for tonight. So this is an action item that will require a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion or question on the agenda? Hearing none, Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Papas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. We also need to approve a consent agenda tonight. So this also is an action item and will require a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves items as presented under consent agenda and authorizes the officer to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Papas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. We are now to the portion of our meeting where we are going to recognize our Classified Employee of the Year. And so I just want to, Dr. Pilch already alluded to this, but I want to read a few comments about Ms. Roscoe. So Brenda Roscoe has been a District Six employee for 15 years and currently serves as an outstanding special education teacher assistant. She has worked at Jefferson Elementary, Maplewood Elementary, and Scott Elementary Schools. Jennifer Bachel nominated Brenda and describes her as a dynamic employee. Brenda exemplifies flexibility, patience, and a positive attitude. She is always willing to do whatever needs to be done. Brenda is skilled and versatile and is able to work with students from kindergarten to fifth grade in all areas, including reading, math, and writing. Brenda came to Greeley in 1999 and has two grown sons. She loves reading and hiking, walking her dog, and spending time in the outdoors. So thank you, Brenda Roscoe, for exemplifying what it means to be an outstanding classified employee. District Six is truly fortunate to have you. So, Dr. Pilch, I'll kick this to you. I think you have some staff who have a little bit more information about our Classified Employee of the Year.
Yes, and I think they're with us tonight. Oh, there's Julie right now and Linda. Hey, welcome. Thanks, ladies, for being here. So I'm happy to introduce to you our Classified Council co-presidents, our co-vice presidents, Linda Rula, who is Athletic Secretary at Brentwood Middle School, and Julie Lewis, who is our Facility Use Specialist out of Facility Services. Thanks for being here, and I know the two of you want to talk a little bit about this award and why this award is so important. So I'm going to pass it to you two.
Well, thank you very much. Just every year, Classified Council requests nominations for the Outstanding Classified Employee of the Year to be recognized at the school board meeting normally in March. This year, we have 55 nominations submitted, and that represented 33 different employees. The job positions that were arranged from office, kitchen, security, library, para professionals, building maintenance, student advocate, attendance liaons, translators, on and on and on. Once we receive all the nominations, a small committee gets together and reviews all of them and picks out the top six to eight nominations for the entire, and then the entire Classified Council will choose that top one. All personal information is removed, so no one knows who that nominee is. It has been normally announced to the council who that person is, but this year, we were unable to announce that person since Brenda was actually sitting in the room with us. So Brenda, now you know why it was a little bit of an awkward moment at that time, and we knew who had been chosen. We had a plaque made for Brenda before spring break. Once we're able to get out and about again, I'll pick that up and get that for her. There's also a monetary award that goes along with this award. The check has been written and dropped in the mail, so she should get that in the mail here in the next few days. We also made some certificates for everyone who was nominated. Those also will come to you once we're back into our buildings. Julie Lewis, the other co-vice president, will read the names of our nominees.
Thank you, Linda. Good afternoon, everybody. I would like to send out a big thank you to all the classified employees for all they do and that they are still doing for our students. We appreciate each and every one of you. I would like to read the nominees' names and the school and their position. So we have Dos Rios, Wendy Brower, special ed para, Greeley West, Denise Tellez, and she's the head custodian. Also at West, Marcella Mendoza, kitchen staff. Also at West, John Vigil, a building maintenance. Romero 4-8. Lionel, I don't know, Falcone, I'm so sorry. Student advocate, Greeley Tammy Segura, attendance liaison. Greeley West, Lorna Payne, intensive autism program para. At Northridge, Norca Comencho Perez, parent community liaison. Northridge, Alyssa Mascherinas, para. Early Childhood Center, Carlos Real, classroom teacher assistant. Northridge, Rebecca Smith, librarian. Greeley West, Christian Antuna, he's the evening custodian. Northridge, Amy Walmeyer, IFL para. The Northridge Grizzly Kitchen Staff, so the entire kitchen staff was nominated. At the admin building, Alyssa Cox, she's a special ed interpreter, translator. Northridge, Jennifer Jarra, campus monitor. Scott, Brenda, she's the special ed para that was just recognized as the Classified Employee of the Year. Early Childhood Center, Amy Kramer, office manager, Prairie Heights. Laura McCauley, office manager. Hyman Heather Sparks, MAB program. Romero K3, Sheila Irvin is the office manager. McCauleth, Tabitha Wyatt, she's a Bray list. Shawshene is Jacob Morales, a building manager. Early Childhood Center, Angel Gonzalez, preschool teacher assistant. Again, at the Early Childhood Center is Michelle Elliott, she's a child find secretary. Gap, Carla Geteras, office manager. Northridge, Glenn Griffin, custodian. Shawshene, Laura Beirfend, preschool teacher assistant. Shawshene, Darla Ortegan, a para. Dos Rios, Mandy Hurley, office manager. C A M S, Joell, Joellen Smith, special ed para. Greeley Central, Phil Brooksen, Brooksen, sorry, office manager. And at Franklin, Elizabeth Tevis Harris, she is the kitchen manager. So that's everybody that was nominated, and we appreciate all of the time and everything that they do for the students and the staff of school districts. And that's it.
Thank you. Thank you both for being here tonight and for updating us on that. We have some incredible classified employees. It does take, it takes a village to keep our school district running. And our teachers, rightly so, get a lot of, a lot of great praise for what they do and their commitment. But there are a lot of other people that stand behind those teachers who make sure classrooms are ready to go and children are fed and children are transported. So we, we feel incredibly blessed to have the classified staff that we do in this district. So thank you both very much for being here tonight.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next item of business is revisions to the EHB records retention. And this is an action item that requires a motion, so if someone would be so kind.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves revisions to policy EHB records retention as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch, would you please give us and the public a brief synopsis about these revisions?
Thank you, President Matthews, I will. This records retention update actually brings into practice what our actions will be in the future in terms of maintaining electronic records. And so the new piece to this policy identifies that we will store any of our electronic records. So this would be things like emails, calendars, those pieces on former employees and former students for the period of one year after they leave the district. Currently in policy, we don't dedicate a time for managing those records. So this codifies that for us.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. We're going to go around just one by one to see if any board members have comments or questions, and we'll go in alphabetical order. So, Mr. Hayfley, do you have any comments or questions on this records retention revision policy?
Thanks, Ms. Crane. I do not.
Ms. Mueller?
No, I do not.
Ms. Papas?
I don't. Thank you.
Ms. Solis?
No, just thank you for continuing to update all these policies. We really appreciate it.
Mr. Tally?
I have nothing. Thank you.
All right, I have none myself. So seeing no discussion, no further discussion. Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Papas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Our next item of business is revisions to our K, School Community Home Relations Policy. This is also an action item that requires a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six revises the K, School Community Home Relations Policies as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch, would you give us just a quick synopsis of these policies and what we're doing in these revisions?
Thank you, President Matthews and members of the Board of Education. So the piece about this change that I am most proud of is the very first policy that you see, which is KBA and KBAE, the exhibit that goes with it. And it changes our language from parent involvement to parent and family engagement. And I think it aligns nicely with our strategic plan and the work that we're really committed to doing here in District Six, which is actually engaging families in the work of their children in our school district. The other policies, the changes are very minimal, slight changes as recommended by the Colorado School Boards Association. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. We'll go around to board members again, and we'll start with Mr. Tally. We'll go in reverse order this time. Mr. Tally, do you have any comments or questions on this policy?
Yeah, I have one question. The KFA, public conduct on district property, does that include technology? If the technology is sent home and destroyed intentionally, does that fall under this policy as well?
That's a great question. Mr. Tally, I do not believe it does. So I think what you're thinking about is now with distance learning, does this include if people are disruptive while at home or destroy property at home?
Correct.
So I can tell you that our policies, our behavior policies absolutely will apply while students are involved in distance learning. This policy does not address equipment at home. It does not do that.
Okay, thank you.
This is primarily about prohibiting adults from being disruptive to the school environment. You all may remember some work we did around our student dress code and the conversations that we had around changing the policy to address clothing that can be disruptive to the learning environment. One of the pieces that's added to this policy in addition to really defining what is meant by a weapon not being allowed on school grounds by someone other than, by anyone, but this pertains to community members, parents. But the policy, we added language at the very end of this policy that addresses the wearing of clothing or the displaying of items that are disruptive to the school environment. So this allows us to address community members who might not be dressing appropriately or who are dressing in such a way that is disruptive or hurtful to other families and to students.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tally. Ms. Solis? Any comments or questions?
Have any questions? I'm good.
Ms. Papas?
Oh, you're going backwards. I get it now. Okay, sorry. I do. Dr. Pilch, will you please just review what you said about the family engagement, the A policy? I was trying to look at my policy when you were talking. I'm sorry.
I will. So the changes here are not substantive in terms of what the policy requires us to do, but the big deal changes from our SaaS perspective is that we're now using language that is appropriate for what we really intend to do, which is parent and family engagement. Language has been switched out for the previous language that was just parent involvement. So we went from parent involvement to parent and family engagement language in this policy.
Thank you.
Ms. Mueller, do you have any comments or questions?
I don't at this time.
Mr. Hayfley, any comments or questions?
No, thank you.
All right. Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Papas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Our next item is an Innovation 2020 update on strengthening partnerships. Priority one, in district, and priority two, parents and families. And so, Dr. Pilch, I will turn this portion of the meeting over to you.
Thank you. You know, one of the commitments that we made to you all when we went into this emergency planning phase around COVID-19 and online learning is that we would keep the work of the district going. And so this is a piece of that work of the district that we are keeping going. And so it's an update tonight for you from our strategic plan, Innovation 2020, strengthening partnerships, priority one and priority two, again, around in-district relationships and partnerships, and then relationships and partnerships with parents and families. And we have Dr. Stacy Dattery, Assistant Superintendent of Academic Achievement, and Mr. Wes Tuttle, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary, to provide you with this update.
Well, thank you, President Matthews, Dr. Pilch, and members of the board. It is our pleasure to share with you this update tonight, as Dr. Pilch said, on I-2020 Strategic Plan in relation to strategic partnerships. The first slide, as you know, we start with really reminding ourselves of what our district's mission and vision is all about. And we know that in District Six, we engage...
Did we lose Stacy?
I think we did. It seems that her internet has frozen up. We're experiencing what many of our families and teachers are experiencing, I think, in learning at a distance. So, Mr. Tuttle, can you take over?
I can. I'll pick it up until she comes back in. As we think about our vision and our values, we've highlighted a couple of our value statements here. The first one is, we build positive relationships with students, families, and communities. A second value that is real important to this work is we promote access and opportunity and choice. In this slide, obviously, we have four areas, and we are focusing on the top right one, strengthening partnerships. District Six enhances student success by communicating, engaging, and collaborating with our communities and school partners. Within this area, we have two priorities. The first priority is to enhance partnerships between and among programs and district schools. Our second priority is strengthening partnerships with parents and families. The target related to both of these priorities is 80% of parents surveyed will indicate satisfaction. The instrument utilized to gather this data is the Panorama Survey administered annually. We gather two different sets of data related to the two different categories so that we can pinpoint each priority separately. In relation to our first priority, the objectives outlined on this slide focus on establishing partnerships to bridge transitions for our students, kindergarten through post-secondary. In relation to our second priority, the objectives outlined on this slide focus on enhancing resources to support our families, including systems of communication for parents to access information, which has been critical to our work over those last months. Let's spend a few moments on each priority, starting with priority one. As we enhance partnerships between and among programs and schools, we've had some intentional focus on how we transition students from preschool into kindergarten. We have just under 1,000 students in our larger preschool programs that will be transitioning to kindergarten this coming fall. These programs include our District Six preschool, ABC, Head Start Seen, and Early Childhood University. A task force representing these agencies, along with two elementary principals, continued to meet this fall to revise last year's plan and enhance communication between preschool and kindergarten. One of the things we did was to have 28 preschool teachers visit a kindergarten classroom, increasing their understanding of the kindergarten program and to better assist students and families in making this transition. In addition, we planned to have our transition meetings on March 30th. Well, as you know, that didn't happen, and we have rescheduled those to happen virtually on April 24th. We have a plan to allow virtual meetings from school to school to assist in transitioning students from preschool to kindergarten, from fifth grade to sixth grade, and from eighth grade to ninth grade. When we look at our outcome data related to our strategic plan, we have not yet met our goal... When we look at our outcome data related to our strategic plan, we have not yet met our goal of eighty percent. However, we've seen a steady increase going from sixty-seven percent in 2017 to seventy-six percent in 2020, with every indicator increasing in this year's data. When we think about the progress data, first of all, we had the twenty-eight preschool teachers observe kindergarten classrooms in December. In addition, we are anticipating discussing over nine hundred students transitioning from preschool to kindergarten, as well as a hundred percent of students transitioning from fifth to sixth and eighth to ninth grades. As we think about our next iteration of our strategic plan, some next steps include working with our MTSS teams to strengthen our recording of interventions within Alpine Achievement as it transitions to EduClimber. We will be monitoring and strengthening our transition meetings, including how we transition our high school students to post-secondary. We will also be leveraging the cultural proficiency work with staff and administrators across the system to develop a comprehensive plan for parent engagement. If Dr. Stacy Dattery is on, I'm going to pass it over. Perfect. Let me pass it to you for our second priority.
All right. Thank you, Wes. Well, hope my internet holds out now, so I apologize for that. So, thank you. And as we look at priority two actions in strengthening partnerships with parents and families, one of the most beneficial aspects of education is building positive relationships with the school community, including parents and families. District 6 uses several communication tools to continue to build trusting relationships with our community, and several of those are listed on this slide for you. CTS Language Links is a call center that gives all district employees and partner organizations access to high-quality interpreters. Other systems include Parent Link Messenger, which is used by all schools on a daily basis to communicate information to parents, School Mint that is used to manage school choice, open enrollment, and student transfers, and most recently, online registration. Finally, the Families in Transition Program and the Students in Transition Program consist of three liaisons, excuse me, that work specifically with students and families experiencing homelessness and local agency lease who support homelessness and high mobility. Liaisons also provide social, emotional, and academic support and access to wraparound services with external stakeholders. So, District 6 Family Center continues to work and create meaningful opportunities for all students and families, and the Family Center partners with external stakeholders across the community as a strategy to identify needs and build and strengthen those partnerships. Currently, the Family Center and the Immigrant and Refugee Center collaborate and provide adult education classes, including English, GED, and citizenship. Such partnerships have been expanded beyond the center to include sessions at even at five of our district schools and to other local organizations. Weld Food Bank, the Colorado State, excuse me, additional partnerships include the Price Opportunity Project with CU Boulder, the Weld Food Bank, and the Colorado Statewide Parent Coalition with our Title I schools. Events such as the Price of Opportunity Project is evidence that District 6 values and honors our community voice by inviting nationally-renowned family and community engagement experts to engage our parents in focus groups about parent and family engagement. And when we look at our outcome data related to our strategic plan priority two, we have seen an overall increase going from sixty-one percent in 2017 to seventy-eight percent in 2020. It's also important to note in this data that we have increased overall parent survey participation from the first year to this past, to this current year. In 2017, we had just seven hundred and thirty-two of parents' surveys completed. Four hundred and sixty-four were completed in 2018. In 2019, we had one thousand two hundred and sixty-three parent surveys completed, and this year, we had a total of three thousand one hundred and six completed. So, as a result of an increase of parent and family participation, we are gaining a more accurate picture overall of parent satisfaction. This slide is in relation to progress data. And really, with our more recent involvement with COVID-19 and what has occurred as of late, the community support from the Immigrant and Refugee Center of Greeley has been amazing. It has provided us with the ability to reach our students and our families whose primary language is Burmese, French, Karani, Malay, Somali, Spanish, and Swahili. The partnership with the IRC translators has ensured that these aforementioned languages are provided visually as well as verbally via voice recordings. Additionally, one hundred percent of our schools are accessing the Parent Link Messenger system and manage attendance messages, nutrition messages, in addition to weekly communication with families and with parents. It is data-driven, and it can track pertinent data through infinite campus. It can be used for parents, families, and staff members to share information. Additionally, when reviewing School Mint data after two years of implementation, we have realized that nearly ten percent of our parents that represent one thousand eight hundred and seventy-three students, or yeah, students, access School Mint for open enrollment this past fall. Of those open enrollments this year, seventy percent were accepted into their school of choice. Now, this is in addition to the current students who are already open enrolled in their school of choice. So, recommendations for the upcoming revised strategic plan include continuing a partnership with the Colorado Statewide Parent Coalition alongside the District 6 Family Center to engage parents and families from our Title I schools primarily in these monthly meetings. To further support families, these meetings will support educational stakeholders across the system to provide essential information around academics and social, emotional learning supports through facilitated conversations that will really elevate authentic and engaging activities for that parent community. Moving forward, a primary objective is to develop high-engagement activities that address the needs of parents and our families as a result of the data that was derived from the Panorama Survey. The two particular areas that have been identified as the most primary areas to support our parents with is that of supporting their students with their learning at home as well as social, emotional well-being. Currently, steps are being taken to schedule and facilitate interactive workshops in which family members gain awareness on such topics as blended learning and mindfulness. Because of these strong and existing partnerships that we have with our community stakeholders providing these services, we are excited and optimistic to elevate the support to the next level and to further engage more parents in their students' learning at home. We appreciate the time that you've given us tonight to share with you a quick update on priorities one and two of strengthening partnerships, and we will answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, guys, for that update. We'll just go around again in alphabetical order, starting with Mr. Hayfley, to ask comments or ask questions. Mr. Hayfley, do you have any comments or questions?
I do. Dr. Dattery and Mr. Tuttle, thanks to you and the people that you work with to be so conscientious on making our parents and families be part of the district. You know, some things that stood out to me are the adult resources, the adult education, and we see it now with the Weld County Food Bank and the Parent Coalition, the ability that you're using to share all of our information in a myriad of languages to try to ensure that everybody is receiving the information that will help them be successful in the district. You know, Ms. Solis, and I go back a long ways, and the use of School Mint to determine who gets where for open enrollment, it takes the guesswork and the dark side out of who gets to go where. And so, I appreciate that being implemented. My one, I do have a concern that, you know, I know that we've had great increases in the number of people, parents, who do the Panorama Survey, but I still don't think three thousand parents is where we need to be at this point. And I'm curious as to how you're going to go about securing more folks to participate in the future. Please, thanks again.
Thank you. I do appreciate the comment, and I'll start and just say a few things about the work that's been done and the continued efforts. And then, Wes, if there's anything you would like to add, or Dr. Pilch as well. I will say that I agree with you. Three thousand is not near the number of families that we would like to have. And it has continued to increase, and in fact, nearly tripled this last year over the prior years. So, I think each year, our families are expecting this. We are figuring out different things that help to support our families to actually have access to this, from offering it at times when they're actually already in the buildings, whether it be at parent-teacher conferences or different events that are happening at the schools. And also, for our different ways in which Teresa and her team have been able to push this out. So, I think part of it is just getting our parents used to filling out a survey like this and knowing that it's coming, and then providing it at a time in the year that is where we have the most people that would be able, you know, and events that are already happening so that it is not just something that hits people's inboxes, but rather is actually being done. So, we will continue to have those conversations, and we'll continue to address that. And our principals, in different ways, are bringing that in and pushing that out to their families as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Mueller, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I just think that the work that you do to engage families is terrific and to keep up the good work.
Ms. Pappas?
I do have a couple of questions. I too want to thank you for your work. I know that this is, I know that we've been working on this for a long time, and I appreciate this information. I have a couple of questions, though. One, with the MTSS intervention plans going from Alpine to EduClimber, can you just give me a brief, like, what is EduClimber? And what's the difference in that?
I can start with that. So, Alpine Achievement was bought out by an umbrella company. And so, EduClimber is a combination of Alpine Achievement and some other tools. Alpine Achievement, they allowed us to continue this year's use, even though they are a part of this umbrella company. And so, we're looking at what are the components that we will enhance our work as we move forward within that intervention and tracking those interventions within it.
So, if there's a plan already in place in Alpine, the plan is that it will continue in EduClimber?
The plan, yes. All those plans will continue and will migrate into the new system. We wanted to take this year to allow the bugs to get worked out and that kind of stuff before we jump onboard. The EduClimber will be the company that will be, or the program that we'll be using then.
Thank you. Another question I have, so I'm really excited about the transition plans for all the levels. I think that this is just some excellent work. If I, though, I do have a question. If I have a child and I have not had access to preschool, but my child's starting in kindergarten, how would I have, how would I set up a time to have maybe a meeting or something other than when I do screening in the fall?
Yes. So, typically during this month of April, we do kindergarten roundup, and we have hosting events at every single school during this month of April. Well, obviously, with us doing virtual learning, we still want families to go ahead and register on online process, so we can still get them into the system, but we are canceling, obviously, our in-person virtual meetings at this point. But what I would encourage families to do is those that are going to be enrolling in the fall, if you have needs or if you want to meet the principals, once we get back in our brick-and-mortar schools, by all means, contact the school, set up a time to meet with the principals. We'd be happy to show you around the school and orient you to the school. And especially if you have some concerns about your child that you want to share, we'd be happy to meet with you. We purposely delay our kindergarten from starting three days into the school year, so there's an opportunity for us to do some assessment, get to know the kids before we launch into the school year.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And then, a last comment is just how much I appreciate the partnerships with the State Parent Coalition and all the work that's happening with that. I think that is making a difference, and will continue to make a difference. So, I thank you for that. That's all I have.
Thanks, Ms. Pappas. Ms. Solis, do you have any comments or questions?
So, I apologize. It might be a little noisy at my house. I just wanted to kind of reiterate kind of what Terry was saying about the Parent Coalition. I appreciate the work with them. Were there any suggestions that they had to maybe increase the amount of parent engagement, like what Mr. Hayfley was talking about?
The Parent Coalition? I don't think, we really haven't engaged that group in those conversations, but that's certainly another next step. And particularly when we think about just even this next round of strategic plan work and our parents wanting to help their kids more at home and being more involved and the kind of the things that we've actually put in place this year around the Parent Coalition, extending that and expanding that work next year will be part of what we actually are doing and engaging in as well. So, that's part of the next step, it's part of the work that we just need to do, continue to engage parents.
And then, I have one more question. So, now that we're doing a lot of this obvious schoolwork from home and kiddos have devices at their home, is there any work in working with parents to get them more involved and to teach them strategies on how to work the electronic part of being in contact with the district?
Currently, right now, going into week three, we have not given a lot of energy into and putting that to our parents outside of supporting our parents with SEL supports, things like that, that are just that social, emotional support, helping to talk with their kids about their, about going through this process and really help. And I would say helping our parents through the documents that have been set out when we engaged, you know, into this remote learning environments differently. So, we've done that kind of work. I would say that's pretty baseline work. It's not ongoing. It's not continuing with meetings or sessions or opportunities in that way at this point. Rhonda, that's...
I might add, too, at the elementary level, they're doing, initially doing one-on-one phone calls with the students. And oftentimes, those are through the parents' cell phones or things like that initially. So, there was an initial contact through the parents to help them navigate that, and the parents can always access those teachers if they have questions. We are using the parents at the elementary level as a point person to help with content needs, questions on how to access things. And so, those communications are continuing to happen on a weekly basis.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Mr. Tally, any questions or comments?
Yes, I have a few questions. First of all, thank you, guys. Strengthening Partnerships is like in my top four of priorities. Just kidding. My question was around the Language Link. I think that that's an amazing resource for staff to use. Is the district looking, or are there plans to have a system like this for parents that need to call in to the schools? And maybe their primary, their language is in Spanish. And so, I mean, is there a way for them to communicate with the school?
I am not aware of a program like that right now. I know Jesse is on the line, and I would just, if there is, or in the, on the Zoom call, if there is anything that is like that that he is made aware of, or Dr. Pilch, if you're, if you have any information on that?
Well, you know, I'll just add that there is the tech line, there's a help line, a tech line, and for parents who are having technical difficulties. And then, you know, once we're able to identify the language, then we can reach back, and we can use Parent Link from our end to lead that conversation. I don't believe we have a system that parents can initiate that translation through the phone. However, once the parent makes contact and we know there's that need for translation, then we can initiate the Parent Link to do that.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. And then, my last question, I was looking on your slide, the recommendations for revised strategic plan slide. The last bullet there is leveraging the cultural proficiency work with staff administrators across the system to develop a comprehensive plan for parent engagement. What is, what is that looking like? Or is that, are there plans for that yet? And are there plans to involve students on how to engage their parents?
Wes, that is on your slide. Do you want to address? Okay. I didn't know if you wanted to address it.
I know the cultural proficiency work sits under Dr. Dattery, and so, I didn't know if you want to address it. But right now, as we think about our next iteration of strategic plan, we know there is a lot of work in cultural proficiency still to do, and we have begun that work. We've been doing some intentionality with that work over the last couple of years, but we know there is some large work left to do in that area. And Ray, when you ask about specifically bringing students into that conversation, I know that that is definitely part of that conversation. Jesse has been leading that work, and Student Voice is definitely a part of that work, because we're working on that.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't have... I don't have any other questions or comments, guys. Just thank you for your work, Dr. Dattery, Mr. Tuttle, thanks for this report tonight, Dr. Pilch. Our next item in business is property acquisition. And this is an action item that will require a motion. And so if someone would be so kind to offer that motion.
I moved that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves the contract for the Boomerang property and authorizes Megan Spencer to act on the district's behalf at the closing of this property.
Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch, would you give us just a a quick update of what we're doing in this property acquisition?
Thank you, President Matthews. You all know that several months ago, we closed on a property in West Greeley. That was actually west of the school district boundary. In the hopes of being able to leverage that property to, for other property within the district boundary. And this brings that to fruition with a trade for property owned by Banner Health. Here in the school district for that property out west near Promontory. So we have, we have implemented the possibility of this trade upon the approval of the contract tonight. We will proceed and and we will acquire that additional property here within the school district boundary.
All right, thank you, Dr. Pilch. We'll just go around and ask board members if they have any comments or questions and we'll go in reverse order this time. Mr. Tally, any comments or questions on this action item?
No question, just want to say this is, I think this is an amazing thing. To be able to see that there is the the potential for growth in our sort of landlocked district that we have right now is is that we can have this opportunity to grow in some way in the future. So very proud and happy to see this.
Ms. Solis?
I'm just, thank you for trying to be as inventive as possible when it comes to land acquisition. I know we are challenged, so I just appreciate staff's work on this.
Ms. Pappas?
I agree, thank you so much, thank you, Megan. I know that this has been a long, long time and a lot of work, so I appreciate it. And as Ray said, this is pretty exciting for our district, so I'm looking forward to what happens.
Ms. Mueller?
The only question I had is, and I may have missed it in the paperwork that was provided, getting a sense of where. I saw that it was 71st and 10th. Any sense of, kind of, I'm trying to spitball where that is?
So if you take that part, large parcel land. That is in the middle of the Boomerang Golf Course between Fourth Street and 10th Street on 71st Avenue, that's the land we're talking about.
Okay, thank you. That's the only question I had.
Mr. Hayfley?
Thanks to all for being so visionary and and thinking outside of the box to come up with a solution that caused people to pull out their hair, literally. And I think that everybody deserves an incredible amount of credit for that, so thanks.
I would just echo, this is super exciting. So offer thanks as well. Saying no other discussion, Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Hi.
Mr. Matthews?
Hi.
Mrs. Mueller?
Hi.
Ms. Pappas?
Hi.
Mrs. Solis?
Hi.
Mr. Tally?
Hi.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Thank you, uh, thank you, Ms. Spencer and everyone for bringing that to us tonight. That is our last item for tonight and we timed this just about perfectly. It is 4:55, so we're gonna adjourn this business portion of our meeting and take a five-minute recess. And exactly five o'clock, we will, we'll begin a work session. This meeting is now adjourned. We have everybody back. I had to go make tea. I'm in my bedroom and the heat just doesn't get to this room. And when I have the door shut, so I needed something to warm me up, I'm freezing.
And my, my weakness is starburst jelly beans. And so I promised myself, I would, I promised myself I wouldn't get anymore, but I had to go get at least two more handfuls.
So we have two.
It's my weakness. I, my kid gets some scent from grandma's and I, I don't steal them, I take them. And tell him later after they're gone that I took his jelly beans, but.
Well, I think we got everybody back now, so. Let's go around just for for board member comments and reports. So we'll, we'll start in alphabetical order again. Mr. Hayfley? How are you?
It was great to see everybody. Happy birthday to Mrs. Mueller and Mrs. Solis. So I hope you guys had spectacular days on your day of celebration. Just a couple of things, you know, I know that when we began our last meeting, it was the initial kickoff of of our online learning. And right afterwards, I received several very frustrated emails stating that Schoology was blowing up. And and since then, I've received an equal number or more that Schoology is working really well now and people are pleased. And earlier today, I told Dr. Pilch how one of my friends who teaches at Keith. They were on a chat board with her students and one of her students said, you know, I've always taken school for granted. And I miss my teachers like Ms. Pike and all of my fellow students and even the school. And and I hope that they all come back with the same renewed vigor when they get back to bricks and mortar in the near future.
Thank you, Mr. Hayfley. Ms. Mueller?
Well, I'm fortunate to be friends with many parents of students in School District Six. And friends with parents who have their students in other districts around the state. And I am hearing just a lot of comments about how much they appreciate the concentrated effort. And and also clear communication coming from the district on how education is to proceed. How teachers are are working with students, how parents know what to expect. And that some of the the friends I have outside the district are not having a similar experience. And they have had a little wistfulness of why is everything going well in Greeley and Evans? And why is it difficult in blank district? I'm not going to out anybody, but I think that is a a testament to the fact that the administration moved so quickly. And did such good work in training our teachers on how to transition. It was, it was very challenging, I'm sure, for a lot of teachers. This is just not what they've been trained professionally and through their education to do is use Schoology or have meetings on Zoom. I know for me, there's been a steep learning curve on teaching on online technology as well. So I really appreciate everybody that has worked to get our students still in their home classroom, yes, but in the classroom learning daily.
Thank you, Ms. Mueller. Ms. Pappas?
Um, I too have heard just positive things about how well it's going in District Six. There was a Facebook post today from a person who was talking about just how much the work in District Six is appreciated. And there was a shout out to people, what's happening in their districts. And the overall comments were, as Pepper was saying, people, it's kind of frustrating for people that they're not as far ahead. One thing I really want to applaud the people involved, I think Jessica, Cassie Guy. I know the UNC Professor Sue Mayer and Beth Franklin worked really hard to figure out a way to get students to participate. And do their, continue their experiences this semester without actually being in the classroom. And so if you haven't had a chance to look at the read alouds that students are doing. To students that are available to students, I just really appreciate that. I know it's not easy, but I have heard from Sue Mayer about how excited the the students are to be able to prepare a book and present it. And know that that is valued by everyone, so I appreciate that. I do have a question about, this is probably for you, Dr. Pilch. I have had a couple of questions about how the charter schools are involved in this process. You may be talking about it in your update today. So if you are, that's fine. Just, just that, the question about not not being on Schoology or they are or how that's going, so.
I'm happy down to that now. So we do have a weekly meeting with the charters, a little more frequently in the beginning. Stacy has taken that over with them to support them. Most of them are not on Schoology, I think one of, one or two of them maybe. They are mostly using Google Hangouts because they didn't all have a license for Schoology. But you know, that, this is their, their curriculum. This is, you know, they, they are exempt, they wave out of our curriculum, they, they wave out of our, our district assessments and our district content. And so this is their curriculum and and their programming. They've worked really hard to get Chromebooks out to students who didn't have Chromebooks, they're working hard to get internet to students. They're struggling with the same things the rest of the district is struggling with. But you know, they're, they're working hard. I think if you're hearing that families are having issues, they should do the same thing we're telling families, which is work back with your building principal to to resolve those issues. Thank you, Terry.
Yeah, and not necessarily issues, just questions about how it was connecting and how what was the similarity differences with District Six.
So I. Our role is just, our role is primarily support, you know, as they're trying to figure out this, we're trying to support them so they don't have to make decisions on their own. And we're, I think Stacy's working really hard to try to kind of keep them together also so that they, they feel like they have the support of one another as they're making these decisions. You know, they're, I think they're gonna stay right with us in terms of decisions around school closure and graduation and things. I think they'll follow, you know, with us in terms of the district and work with us on those. I see, Dr. Dattery, do you have something you want to add?
Ms. Solis?
So just a lot of parents commenting on how they didn't realize that there was this much work being with their kids all week long and teaching. So giving lots of kudos to our teachers. So hopefully this gives people a different perspective of just really truly how hard it is to be a teacher. And, you know, making sure that we do what we can as a community to support them. So I think this has kind of been a weird, good experience for parents to really grasp how hard teachers have to work. And without even recognizing, I mean, you're talking about 20 to 27 students all in one room and it's not just your kids. So hopefully this helps, you know, in a positive way, the discussion around education. Getting some questions about whether we're gonna close or not throughout the end of the year. So some parents are concerned and in wondering, obviously other districts have made announcements. So that's been a big question that I've been getting. And then just a kudos to, you know, the frustrations come out, but then yet they're dealt with and people are back online. So just thank you to all the staff and all the hard work that they're doing, our IT group. And then also communications, you've done an amazing job, Dr. Pilch and Teresa, to make sure that we're getting information, accurate information out as soon as possible. Us as board members, I see us sharing it all over social media. So thank you, everyone, for just working so hard to get that out. Other entities are not doing that as well in our community, so I really give us props for for trying to make sure that we keep everyone up to date.
Thank you, Ms. Solis. Mr. Tally?
I just, I want to thank parents right now. I can, I sincerely, from my heart, I can tell you that it's, it's difficult. Especially parents who are, who are trying to work and maintain their employment. And and parents who maybe don't have employment anymore. I just, I, my heart is out to every single parent out there and and I, I just wish the best for everyone. And I'm hoping that this, this passes through quickly so we can, we can get back to what we could call our quote unquote, normal lives. But yeah, the parents and then the staff, like everyone else here said, I really appreciate everything the staff have done. All the communication that they have, my, my kid's school calls and he has video conferences and chats with them Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So he's pretty busy and I just really appreciate that, that that support and and that communication. And then I also, I want, I really want to say thank you to the board. And Dr. Pilch, I feel like I go everywhere in this community and I'll give an example. Went to Dutch Bros and someone asked me, how do you, why do you look so familiar? And I was like, I, I don't know, you have to tell me, you know, and it came around after a conversation that I was on the board. And then that for some reason, Mr. Hayfley, I feel like you know everyone and everyone knows you. And so they, they knew you and that's how, that's how the conversation went. But they just, they, they really appreciate everything. they knew you and that's how that's how the conversation went. But they just, they they really appreciate everything that the board does and everyone is just so so impressed and and just thankful for for who we have leading us through this this difficult fight that we're in and and I and I could not be any more proud to be part of this team. So thank you all.
Thanks, Ray. I don't have much much to add. I will echo what you said though about about parents. I just had to text my children to to keep it down during our board meeting so I could hear and so it's it's definitely a challenge. It's been, it's been weird not to not to go to Chaplough every day or twice a day or how many other times we get there. Just not to see teachers and just, you know, it's some degree of home away from home for us and and we do, we miss, we miss our schools. For sure. I know our kids do and just would echo what everybody else has said. You just see, you see the the leadership and in a time of crisis like this, I mean, you see the the difference in leadership when you look at other other places, not just in the state, but around around the country and you watch the struggles and you watch our 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 group come together, our system come together. And so it's super as frustrating as it's been and as tough as it's been, and it's super encouraging to see where we are. And that's all, that's really about all I have. Oh, I did want to thank you guys for for your videos and and thank you for Teresa for making us all look a little bit better than we normally do and we appreciate that and that turned out really well. Not sure if it, if we looked as good as the the West cheerleaders, but but yeah, I thought our video turned out great. The our next item is a revision strategic planning. So Dr. Pilch, I will hand this this part to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. So I think what we want to do tonight is just begin to lay some groundwork for some bigger work that we're gonna need to do over the next month or so. And so I'll just start with saying that I think we may want to find a half day work session sometime in the next month where we can, of course, have Mrs. Mash involved with us as well. So on one of the days that she is not working and come together to do this this work a little more deeply. So what we're going to do tonight, and we only scheduled 30 minutes for this, so we'll use that time and then we'll move on to the next item. But I just want to kind of do some level setting in terms of what the priorities in the strategic plan have been and then talk about share with you the some of the data that we we got from the visioning work that we did in February. And so you're going to leave tonight with some homework to take that, those statements that we provided in your your board item tonight around best hopes and collective statement and the strategies and actions. And we're going to ask you to take that information and then and then take a look at our priorities, which we're going to talk about here in just a minute. And think about, are there priorities that we can let go? And are there priorities that we should be adding to our strategic plan? Knowing that we can't add too many because this is one, you know, one plan, one brochure, but I'm going to try to share my screen here and just share with you just to bring you kind of to level set a little bit. Is it working? Are you seeing my screen with the strategic plan? Awesome. Okay, so just to kind of level set here, what I'm talking about, if you can see my cursor here, are the the priorities and the priorities under each of the big, the four big goals. Now, this version does not have the goals updated because this is, you know, this is our old version of Innovation 2020. But those new goals are in a document in your your board information. So I want to share that with you now. So in your board packet tonight, you'll see that we have the revised version of the mission and vision and the values and beliefs that the board adopted. And then in green down below, we have each of those four goals that you have also adopted. Now, we haven't done any work on the priorities yet. So you can see under each goal, for example, under student learning achievement, there are those four priorities there. And three under strengthening partnerships and the two under climate and culture. And then the three under operational and organizational effectiveness. So what I want us to begin thinking about as a team is what are, you know, which of these priorities do we want to still take, have take front and center in our new strategic plan, which I think we've agreed is probably going to be called Innovation 2030? Which of these we want to continue and and carry forward is those big, big priorities. Moving it off of this brochure does not mean we won't continue the work. But if it's on the brochure, it means it drives the work that we will do over the next decade. Knowing that it'll come back to the board again for revisions over over that time period. I know that there are some things that have come up that are not here. So for example, as we come down to climate and culture, I would expect that we will have a priority added around this that really spells out the social and emotional learning of students and staff. You all have made that a priority. Our community talked about it significantly in the revisioning work in February. So, you know, that's that's kind of where we hope to start the conversation, knowing that we're going to come back after you've had a chance to look at the best hopes and the collective statements. Come back and really begin to identify those priorities, new ones, and maybe if there's some we can get rid of. Or not get rid of, take off of the brochure is rather what I mean. So I want to pause there and just give each of you a chance to react to that and and kind of talk about where you are in terms of thinking about the priorities and the work of the strategic plan. So I think President Matthews, this would be a good time just to go around and give each board member kind of a chance to react around those priorities. I mean, you can see in this document I put up again now under the priorities than actually become the measurements that we're looking at. I don't want you to be thinking about the measurements so much today as we, what you're really thinking about, you know, those priorities and and maybe if we just kind of go, maybe if each board member could just look at under under each of the four goals, are there priorities right now that they're saying, we absolutely have to keep this priority? And I'm wondering about a priority that asks for this. Maybe that would be a good place to start.
So just do student and learning achievement first?
Yeah, I think that's a good place to start. Yeah.
Okay, well, let's let's go reverse order this time. Mr. Tally? Thoughts on the four priorities under student and learning, student learning and achievement?
Right now, I'd have to say no because I'm trying to process it. So not right now, I don't have any thoughts or questions or anything.
All right. Ms. Solis, any, any thoughts about additions or subtractions, changes to those four priorities?
Well, I definitely want to keep priority one. I feel like we are moving in that right direction and yet we still have work to do to make sure that we are achieving that for all students. So I definitely would want to keep that one. We want to keep working with alignment or priority to aligning systems to students to graduate on time and to make sure that they're college and career ready. I feel like that's going to be one of our staples that we continue to work on and have part of our messaging and when we're setting goals. I think number three and number four, we can maybe change those a little bit and maybe incorporate some other things. I'd have to think about that a little bit. But priority one and two are definitely very important that I think that we still need to keep our eye on and have them listed here. As far as adding something, I just think that parental engagement part is is still really important to me. I appreciate the work that we're doing, but I feel like it needs to be a priority. And that would be the only thing I would add probably at this moment.
Rhonda, do you feel like it goes that you want to see that in student learning and achievement?
I think so. It kind of goes along with that piece that I've been talking about is how do we partner with our our parents and our students and our staff into making sure that our our students are learning and achieving. And I I feel like we don't encompass parents in that and so we don't really work on that. And so I feel like if it was in words here and a priority, that that would really force us to make sure that we're figuring out, how do we bring parents along? And I mean, and it kind of goes along with what our survey is. I mean, if if parents aren't engaged, if parents don't feel like they're part of anything, then they're not going to do a survey. They're not going to feel like their voice matters. And so we need to make sure that they know that we value them and that we want them part of this process. And so I think it listed as a priority in that learning and achievement. Again, in that perspective of that it takes all of us, it takes the the parents, it takes the teacher, it takes the student. And how do we do this together? And I think it kind of goes along with that personalized learning experience for all students. How do we have that without including parents?
Okay, thank you, Rhonda. Ms. Papas, you got thoughts or comments on student learning and achievement on those four priorities?
Um, well, I also, I don't see anything I would take away. It took me a while when Rhonda was talking about and the involvement of parents in this personalized learning experience. We had a conversation about this the last time we did this work. And it took me a minute to wrap my head around what she with the hope was. And so once I did wrap my head around it, I totally agree that we should have something in there. I don't know if it's a priority or if it's part of the action steps. But to provide parents the opportunity to have to give them the opportunity to have input and have a say in those personal learning plans. So there may be other things I think of, but right now I would agree with Rhonda on that sense.
Pepper, any, any thoughts on on student learning and achievement?
Well, so I needed to bring up the brochure grid because I tend to think priorities are great in their language, but I want to see the systems that mean they're either achieved or they're not achieved because what I'm I'm trying to find out is if they're achieved, which we have many priorities under many of the areas that have been achieved. We've got it on our brochure. Then I think we need to augment those measurements or create new priorities. Because things can get stale if you are using the same language or you've already achieved something, if that makes sense. So I think what I feel like I want to do is identify those hopes and the the document that you have on there, that's the hopes and dreams that the visioning group created to see what else came out of that. I do agree that definitely priority one and two, we haven't met that in terms of hitting those measurements that we set for ourselves. We really haven't hit the measurements that we set out to achieve. So I think those need to stay in place. But I don't have, I, I, this does require for me, I'm a little bit more of a deliberative thinker that I need to have some time to kind of look at that and figure out what it is that people were saying in that visioning work, which was great work, but two months ago now. And my memory is a little bit hazy on what were some of the main things that came out of this specific focus area. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Pepper. Mr. Hayfley?
I'm comfortable in keeping all four as they are, but I agree with Ms. Mueller that we need to update the measurements to be a in sync with the people that we worked with in Evans earlier this winter concerning the parents partnerships. I think that that's really important. Parent engagement, excuse me, but I would have it in the strengthening partnership area as opposed to student learning and achievement.
Thank you, Mr. Hayfley. Anything else?
My only question again would be around those three and four about what's achieved and what's not achieved and number four, the the priority aligned curriculum and assessment practices that are research based and define clear and concise targets. I feel like the priority as stated, we have come close to achieving. But if you look at the goals underneath the the priority, we're we're still a ways away, but I feel like we've done a great job improving the curriculum. It's just getting getting 75% of students to score three or higher on the CMAS. You know, we're we're not, we're not there yet. I'm not sure that anybody's there yet. That one. But but yeah, well, it seems like maybe there's some work to do around the the language there for priority four. I feel like we've we've put in place good, good curriculum and good assessment practices and and research based and we have good targets. It's just, it's just getting to the targets now. Let's do the, do the same thing. We'll go around again on on our next next one, strengthening partnerships. And it's a good, I don't know if you guys can pull it up. It is helpful, as Pepper mentioned, to to pull up the brochure and see what is, what has been achieved. But we'll, we'll just stay in order to give everybody a chance to to think before they, before they talk sometimes. Mr. Tally, you want to go again for us then?
Yeah, I think the only thing and it's no, not the only thing, but I feel like strength strengthening partnerships with parents and families should be our first priority. I think that that should be, that should be bumped up because we do talk a lot about engaging families and trying to strengthen that relationship. So I think that it would show the community and and parents and families that this is a top priority or a, that's high up on the list for us rather than having it as number two. That's one of the the biggest things that stood out to me. And I other than that, I mean, I was looking at the the brochure and it's, I mean, really one of, that is the only one that we have not achieved. So I, I don't know. That's the only thing I have is I would like to see that as as our first and and highest priority and strengthening that relationship with the families.
All right. Thanks, Ray. Ms. Solis?
So I agree with Ray that that needs to be a priority. I disagree with John of keeping it in strengthening partnerships. When I see who's listed under partnerships in the other priorities, I don't feel like parents should be in that category. I don't see us with them being with external stakeholders, businesses, local government and community organizations. I know they have their own priority, but I still don't see that as strengthening partnerships. I really do see that under student learning and achievement. And the reason I say that is when you in our community, when we had those kiddos that were struggling in the student recovery program and then we had the the parent academy, that was what made the difference in the student's success was having those parents in that academy. All way before that, when we had, when we didn't have the the rock money, we had been doing it the same old way. We had been putting parents in that straight, that same kind of partnership kind of category and we weren't getting those results. It wasn't until we were putting them in there and actually putting them in part of the plan of learning and achievement for their student, for their their child, our student, that's really when we saw the difference. And so I guess that's why I would like to kind of switch that up because I don't see them as just an ordinary stakeholder, community member. And we only have them for that short time that they have their their child in our district. So I think that even makes a difference. So that priority work needs to be while their student is in our district. And how are we strengthening that work to make sure that their kid is achieving? And then that also affects whether they graduate on time, whether their career or college or career ready. So I I just feel like that's in the wrong, the wrong label. I think it needs to be under student learning and achievement. label. I think it needs to be under, uh, student learning and achievement.
Thank you, Rhonda. Terry?
Um, I, I go back to what I said before. I think that there should be the strengthening partnerships component, whether it's a priority or an action plan in the student learning. But I, and I think we need to have a conversation about that. Having, having been in a situation as a teacher and administrator involving parents, I, I see those as two separate things. Um, so I would keep it, I would keep a priority also in the strengthening partnerships, um, because there are partnering with parents is, is pretty comprehensive. And I think when we're working with the state coalition group and there's also a, at least I think there might still be a, um, a task force working with CDE with strengthened partnerships, um, with parents. I feel like that is so big that we should keep it in this, um, goal as well. So I see it in both places. And, yeah.
Any other thoughts or, okay. Thanks, Terry. Um, Pepper?
Um, so I know that there's a few of these priorities that we do have marked as achieved. I think again, we need to create new metrics. Um, the, I, I don't think we should take any of the priorities out, um, because I think there are ongoing priorities in strengthening partnerships. Um, the one thing I will speak to is that we are going to be entering a, a time in which, um, strengthening those partnerships with our local government, business and community organizations is going to become, um, ever more important, especially when we do get to a space where we can reopen up, um, the economy and society. We have a lot of small business owners that are going to be profoundly hurting through this shutdown. And I took to heart very sincerely the comment of the one person who was at the visioning work we did, the, the retreat, that all-day retreat about, uh, we ask our small business owners to support our schools and a lot of them do in extraordinary ways, but we also need to in good faith, support them. And we need to make, I think, some outreach that is very intentional, um, to working with our small businesses that do so much to support our school district. So I do really think that we need to create a new, um, metric perhaps on how we attach a school or, um, whatever it may be, um, to a individual, uh, business or organization within the local community. We, we do get a lot of support from the city of Greeley, from the city of Evans, and I think those partnerships we need to continue to have as a priority in our, our goals.
Thank you, Pepper. John?
Uh, I agree with Mr. Tally. I think that if you were to change those priorities and move two to one and three to two and one down to three, we'd be in good shape. I, I understand what Ms. Solis is, is saying, and I greatly appreciate that. Uh, my reasoning to have, uh, the parental partnership here is that if we don't have relationships and create safe and caring environments for our parents long before they can help their student, they need to feel comfortable in our environment, be made to feel welcome. And, you know, I could understand where it might be in both spots, but first and foremost, if we don't have positive relationships, they're not going to help us do anything. And that's why I still think it should be here, but if it was in both places, I would, I could accept both of those without a problem.
Yeah, I, I too like the idea of Terry's idea of putting it both places. Uh, because it's just thinking about our own relationship with, you know, there's the relationship with the school, uh, that we have in relationship just kind of with the school community and being there for, uh, for those, the events and those kinds of things. It's, it's another thing to be engaged in the, uh, with the teacher, uh, and our kids and the academic, uh, work and, um, I'm optimistic that actually that this is, um, this shutdown, uh, is, is potentially going to help us in this, that, parents are more engaged in, in, I think, in what, what their child does on, on a day-to-day basis and, and the need to help them, uh, a little bit more than, than we normally are. And so I, I think there's some opportunities, uh, even in this, uh, to, to get parents engaged in those, in those individual learning, uh, plans and, and what their child needs. So, um, let's go around to, to the next one. And that's climate and culture. And we'll start again with Mr. Tally, uh, on those two priorities of climate and culture. Do you have any thoughts?
Yes, I, I'm a little, I, I don't know. I, I feel like climate and culture should have more than, than two priorities. To me, it just seems that that is, that, that we should have a lot more effort, um, and intentional effort into that. And I know we, I'm looking at the brochure and something's rubbing me the wrong way about why the first, under the first priority, why all certified and classified staff will participate in cultural responsive training, why that does not say achieved beside it. Um, because I do feel that is something that we as a school district can do. Um, and there might be an answer that, uh, for that, um, I'm going to have to get into that now. But I do think that we need to have some sort of priority around, um, the student to professional, social, emotional ratio of some sort to be a more, a little more intentional about what we are going to do to improve, um, that, that's safe for physical and social emotional wellbeing for all students. I think that, that there should be an additional priority about, um, we don't have to necessarily add more staff to the school, but maybe in this equity team, whatever that looks like, having each staff take um, an X amount of students or something, just so that we do talk about the student ratio and, um, to make sure that all students do have an adult that does have their eyes on them and does have a, you know, a better grasp, um, instead of, instead of relying strictly on our social workers and our counselors um, to check in with these students. I think that we need to engage all staff and that, that, that should be a priority of ours. Other than that, that's, that's all I have.
Thanks, Ray. Rhonda?
So I would probably say that what, the other thing that I've heard a lot over the years, and it's even more so towards the last couple of years, is just the issue around kids being bullied and then also social media. So I almost feel like there needs to be a priority that is specifically, and I mean, I know that it's kind of encompassed in, in two, but I, I feel like it needs to be a priority all on its own because of how many phone calls I've had and how many situations we've had and almost, um, like a, like a revamp or a readdressing why we have the rules in place that we do. I mean, I've had one parent talk to me about, well, you know, my kids told that they're going to get in trouble if they, you know, defend themselves. I don't understand that. So there are people that still don't, you know, understand why we have things in place. And I almost feel like now with, with where we are, we need to reevaluate those and then re-explain them because I think we're in a different spot now with social media and how that plays into the bullying effect. And, and you know, and this coincides with, you know, the suicides that we've had in the district. I think that there's a real priority that we need to do as far as setting a tone in how we deal with and how we talk about the bullying issue in the district. And it's not just in our district. I'm, I'm seeing it in other districts too. I mean, uh, my boss has his kids in Windsor and his kids have had an awful, awful time around the issue of bullying. And so it's something that you see come up in other districts too. I don't know how exactly they handle it or word it or um, how they list that as a priority in their district, but I feel like we've heard enough, seen enough and have to deal with it enough that it needs to be a, a priority all on its own.
Thanks, Rhonda. Ms. Papas?
Um, I think that when the priorities and the actions under those priorities, uh, when we first did this work back in 2015, I think it was, um, I think we, we were at a place where that these priorities were the right priorities. Um, I don't know what the right priorities, how, how to, what they are right now, but I would agree that we need to spend some time thinking about that and really deciding what are our priorities in this. And, um, even as we look at what's been achieved and not achieved, I think we've just, this is, this is one of the, this is a goal that I think we really need to spend some time on, um, and be very thoughtful and intentional about what we want to happen in our school district, um, related to everything that's already been said. So, thank you.
Pepper?
So again, I'd like to, um, reflect on this using the, many of the hopes and dreams that came out of the visioning day. I do remember having a conversation with a student in that, all-day retreat that, uh, the, the question was that certified and classified staff, um, were going through culturally responsive training, but what about students? And that may speak to some of what, um, Ms. Solis is talking about. And I agree wholeheartedly that there is, I think that there's a disconnect from what this, the district and the schools and the administration and teachers say that students are um, supposed to be aware of or know or do or not do in terms of social media, in terms of bullying. But I think that that has to be an ongoing education because there's many students who still, it, it, it actually floors me. They get to the college level, um, and they come up to see me and other advisors, and they don't understand how your social media presence is a permanent record of all the things that you've said are done. And they say and do a lot of things that are going to, um, hurt them in a lot of ways and hurt each other. And it's, I do think that needs to be a priority somehow. I'm not sure what the metrics should be, of course. I don't know how to word it, but I do think there has to be ongoing training with not only the culturally responsive type of work, that means we just know how to treat each other with respect, but also how that gets played out into the social media world. Um, I'm constantly even having to tell college students, you want to be careful about what you put on YouTube and Facebook because your future employer will look up those things. And we've had students who've had jobs rescinded because of something that was posted that was inappropriate. So I think that training needs to start now and, um, it, uh, so much of the bullying training in the past was focused on face-to-face interactions. And that's just, as we're in a school-born meeting virtually, we need to start moving into the next phase of our technology and saying this has to, to encompass all forms of education and all forms of interaction. And so I, I think that has to be a priority that's added in some for fashion. And it does, I do think social and emotional wellbeing almost needs to be separated out into a, um, a secondary or additional priority besides the safety. Maybe we, we, I don't know. I haven't thought through that, but that's just my initial thoughts.
Whenever I mute, I can always forget. Uh, Mr. Haley?
I think I, I'm actually really impressed by all the different, uh, ideas that have just come up in the last 20 minutes. And I don't think that this is the place to, to ferret through all of them. I, to me, this is the kind of thing where we need to have a wide variety of our, our papers on the wall and being able to sit down and discuss them. I think the social, emotional piece needs to be one of the priorities. But I think that all of the things that have been suggested need to be discussed and, and evaluated as to, to become, whether they should become part of the metrics or not, uh, but all of them have merit and are important for our students to be successful in our society.
Thanks, Mr. Haley. Um, and I, I agree with, with Terry. I, I think we're in a good place with climate and culture, uh, in the district. Just the overall culture, um, that it's a, it's, and I think you see it in this, in this crisis. So I think, thinking through what is, what is the work, uh, going forward? Um, and I like a lot of, a lot of the ideas that we've, um, that you guys have come up with. I'm going to try to keep us moving though. We're, we're, uh, we're at 5:45. So, uh, let's tackle this last one, operational and organizational effectiveness. Uh, Mr. Tally, any thoughts on this one?
Yeah, I'll be quick. The priority three, I, I love all these priorities. I think they're amazing. Priority three, I think that we should take, we should revan- or put in the priority, the, the certified position, hiring certified positions with people of color. I think that, that, that should be added into the priority, that wording somewhere in there. Or maybe another priority, but that's the only thing I can think of on top of, of what's ready there.
Ms. Solis?
So priority one, I feel like will always need to be there, um, for as well as we do this, I think that it's something that we continually have to work on. Fortunately, we have some amazing people on staff that help us do that well, and yet we still miss people. So, um, I definitely think we have to keep that one. Um, and then, uh, it's well, priority two, I feel like that's kind of another thing too. And we were always reevaluating our systems to see if they're, you know, working. And I, I feel like this COVID-19 has actually put us in a position where we have to look at some things and are we doing them as well? And if there's things that we need to change, and I know when it came to communication, some things came up. So I think that is another one to, to stay. I, I like Ray's idea. I do think that, um, it does need to be a priority that we have someone of color. Um, I appreciate that a lot of the positions that we have that open up, we tend to, you know, hire within. But if we're already an establishment that is, that looks a certain way, then it's going to be those same people in those positions. And we're not really developing, you know, opportunities for people of color to come in at those different levels. So, um, I don't know how to approach that or do that differently. But I feel that, um, we keep hiring trusted and experienced people that we've worked with here within the district, which is great because they have proven themselves. And yet if we don't have a pool of people of color to fill those positions, then we're still handicapped a little bit. So I agree with Ray on, on that priority. Um, and as far as three, um, obviously we want to continue doing employee retention. I think we have an amazing HR department that is continually doing hard work to see why people leave us or, um, concerns that they have and actually listen to that and take it personal and, and try to do things differently. So I really give Annette and her team a lot of the kudos because I don't feel like that was in place before. Um, Annette was in this position. So I think that's been a great addition to have Annette in there. And I think, you know, she really gets it. And, um, as far as adding something, um, I can't think of anything offhand, but I still feel like these three priorities are still really important in our district.
Thanks, Rhonda. Uh, Terry?
I do not have anything to add. I think that again, once we get to the conversation, um, about the goals, I think that some of the, I think some of that will play out to make sure that we're hitting all the aspects of what's important in there. So nothing more.
Pepper?
So, um, I don't want to be the bad guy, but I need to bring up something that was a repetitive theme at the visioning retreat. And I think it goes under this particular area, and that is, um, a transportation plan that is accessible for all students and parents. And we've heard that in our school visits as well, that there's concern about accessibility and having a a transportation plan that makes sense for working parents and for their students to be able to access after-school activities. I think that, I don't know where that would go in the priority if it fits within one that already exists, or if it means creating a new priority. I think that also, also under priority two, a lot of those achieved markers are about transparency. We need to maintain that transparency for our community by also adding in the, um, the bond oversight committee. Um, that's just a metric that is an update that I think just needs to go in there. Um, but again, I would really want to come up with some concrete ideas by looking at the hopes and dreams that came out of the visioning retreat. That's all I have.
Thanks, Pepper. Mr. Haley?
I agree with everything that's been said.
Thank you. Yeah, and I don't have anything really, really to add. Again, when you, uh, when you look at the number of things that we've achieved and you think about, again, successes in HR, but also, uh, in finance and, uh, some of the other areas. but also in finance and some of the other areas, it's seen a lot of, a lot of improvement here. But, but it's, it says right there, we, we want continuous improvement, so we need to keep, keep moving on that. So Dr. Pilch, did you want to ask any questions or have any, anything you want to respond to before we leave this, this piece of the work?
I think this is great feedback. I think this gives us a good place as a cabinet, maybe start to, to think about some changes in the priorities, additions to the priorities. I think if you got, all will go away and look at the, the best hopes and the collective statements and the suggested actions. So the next time we come back to this conversation, you have that fresh for you. I think that will be helpful. Your comments I think are very helpful and certainly are all things that we have heard before. I mean, it's, you know, you're, you're dead on on the pieces we need to be working on. So thank you.
All right, thank you. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna give it back to you for, for the next piece, which is the COVID-19 update. Dr. Pilch?
Did my screen change? Do you have my emergency response up there? Did you get it? Oh, it has to work.
It's up there, it's up there.
Oh, goodie. All right, that's great. I'm so glad. So we, you know, I, some of this is redundant from last time, and so I'll go over it very quickly. I do want, when we get to the end, I really do need to hear from you all on, on some specific areas about moving forward, in particular around graduation, end of year activities, and in particular around when and if and when we make the decision that we, you know, might close school buildings for the remainder of the school year. So with that, I think we'll go ahead and get started. So again, today, purpose is similar to the last time. We want to share with you our response and the community's response. We want to give you a chance to ask questions and give you a chance to make recommendations on next steps. So just since the last time that we, we were together, we have implement, fully implemented the K-12 students' first day of remote learning and have now been in session two full weeks. And so we suspended those optional enrichment activities and are, are fully into the, the learning. Question that came up today that kind of caught us off guard is some students and some staff, maybe parents, were still thinking that students were not being expected to do the work, that grades were not taking place and that work was not being graded. So you might remember that during that optional enrichment activity period, we announced that grades would not be taken during that time. And I think some people have carried that into these first couple of weeks of actual online learning. So we prepared a communication today that principals will push out to parents and students and staff around the expectation that indeed students are earning grades. And I'll talk a little bit more about how we're handling grades as we go through the presentation today. But we're, we want to clear up that miscommunication. Yes, student, the student work is counting, grades are being taken, and we expect students to be engaged in their learning every single day at school. Then this past week, we were able to put staffing allocations out to the buildings. We've begun hiring through a virtual process. We've continued to hire administrative positions. You all have seen those announcements, that we've begun the hiring of, of teachers virtually. We are hosting twice-weekly principal meetings at elementary and K-8 as well as at secondary, just, you know, keeping principals on the same page and, and figuring out what's tight and what's loose during this, this time of, of emergency management. You'll be glad to know, we've continued with our design advisory groups for the bond. We've made some nice progress there. And I do hope within the next board meeting or two, we will be able to give you some updates on where we are with those projects. We do have the startings of a, of a design at Greeley West High School. It's very exciting. And startings of a design at McCollus, K-8. So I want, we, we will want to share those with you within the next couple of board meetings and give you a chance to see those designs as we continue to move forward. Next week, I believe it is, later this week or next week, we will be doing interviews for the new K-8 school, for the architect for the new K-8. So we'll begin to select that architect and hope we're, we're moving forward in terms of having a location possibly for that new K-8. Again, I'll just mention the partnerships that we've already talked with you about. You know, Charter School, we're, we're really trying to work closely with them. And I know they're very appreciative of the support they're receiving from the District Six staff, you know, as they, as they manage this difficult emergency as well. We continue to have conversations with Ames and UNC. The Ames partnership is especially important as the Early College Academy is still in session, even though Ames has suspended all their learning to online learning for the remainder of the year. We do have Early College Academy still fully operational online. And, and so we're working hard to, to keep that alignment going. We continue to work with the Weld County Public Health and Environment and particularly in person with Dr. Wallace to make the decisions that we're making around the health and wellbeing of our students and staff and in advising us as we make decisions about staff being out and about to do those essential duties like serving food or replacing Chromebooks or probably coming in the next few days, we'll be having some staff actually knock on doors for families where children are not engaging in online learning and just doing some, some welfare checking on those students and families and helping them to understand the importance of engaging. We continue to work with Northern Colorado Medical Center and UC Health. I'll talk a little bit more about that a little later in my update. United Way, you know, as you all know, I serve on the United Way board. So part of our, my work has been supporting Janine as the CEO at United Way and supporting some of the big work that it, that is occurring there as well as making sure that we're being a good partner as a school district as families have needs that might be coming to United Way. I will just share with you, you may be aware that the Cold Weather Shelter expanded to have another location at Island Grove at the Exhibition Center and then recently moved in to the Event Center at Island Grove. There are some clients of the Cold Weather Shelter who are now positive for COVID. So they've worked hard to make sure that there's a separate place for those, those clients as, as well as the other clients. So in my other job as board member on United Way, I've, I've had opportunity to be involved in those decisions as well. We continue to work with Weld Food Bank primarily just in scheduling so that we are scheduling delivery of meals with them and, and the delivery of food with them. I heard last week that they had last week distributed over 10,000 pounds of produce in just one week to families through the two distributions that they did with District Six. Still working with ABC Childcare, of course. They're now looking to, what does this look like when the stay-at-home order is lifted? Or if it is not lifted, what does this look like as families do begin to have to go back to work and there's still a need for childcare? I will, I will put out there that, as I shared last time, there are still hundreds of seats open for childcare. And I understand parents are not in a place where they're, they're comfortable, probably for the most part, sending children to childcare if they can be home with them themselves. Again, we continue to work with the Northern Colorado superintendents. The decision last week when the other superintendents decided to go ahead, some superintendents in the Denver area and Loveland and Fort Collins decided to go ahead and close for the remainder of the year. I worked closely alongside the Northern Colorado superintendents with Mark Wallace and made that decision jointly for us to remain open, at least for now, and waiting on to hear from the governor. We just felt like there was no rush in making a decision. We, we had all launched online learning and we were going to continue with that plan for online learning, regardless of a decision to close or not for the remainder of the year. So we're working closely with those Weld County superintendents and then staying in touch with the Denver area superintendents. And, you know, we're, we're all, even nationally, I'm, I met last week virtually with superintendents across the nation as part of that avid superintendent's collaborative I'm a part of, you know, throughout the nation, where we're all struggling with many of the same issues of how do we get kids access to the internet? How do we ensure equity and access for our students who are, are most vulnerable? How do we make sure we're providing special education services and meeting the needs of our children who are medically fragile? And, and at the same time, how do we take care of our, our staff, our teachers and our other employees as, as they're being asked to teach in this new way? So all of us are, are struggling and learning from each other as we do this. Colorado Department of Education continues to be in touch with the superintendents. They, they have provided guidance, I shared with you last week, around teacher evaluation and that we, that allowed us to waive teacher evaluations. I can talk more about that if, if that's more information you want on that. They have yet to provide additional information about PSAT and SAT for the fall or testing for next year. We did have another conversation last week with the governor and the commissioner. And like the governor today in his press conference, was clear that sometime before the end of the month, he will make a decision about the stay-at-home order and possibly about schools. But it won't be, it won't be at midnight on the 29th of the month, but it also will probably not be tomorrow. It's kind of the message we got today. Whoops, conversations with the city officials, just to make sure we remain on the same page. It's been great to have the mayor on cabinets and to give us regular updates from the city of Greeley. And I was able to have some exchange of conversation this weekend with the city of Evans, Jim Becklenburg. And so we're trying, you know, to support each other and not, not get it cross-purpose on any of the work we're doing. I do want to share with you that as part of my role as a board member on the Greeley Area Chamber of Commerce, I was asked to be a part of a smaller task force around small businesses and the ability to offer grants and incentives for small businesses and criteria for receiving those grants and criteria for the, the selection of businesses to participate in that. And so I am, that's something I've, I've been involved in with a small group of us. And, you know, and I felt like it was worth my time in that we need a successful business community. And, you know, I, I think one of you, President Matthews, one of you mentioned the small businesses earlier tonight. We need, we need our, our business community to thrive. I mean, they are our primary taxpayer. They are the folks who are paying the, the greatest amount on our mill levy override and our bond issue. And it behooves, behooves us to do everything we can to help them to continue to be successful. So I'm into the work now. Again, I just want to share some data with you here and then I'm going to stop and give you a chance to ask questions and make comments. But during that, that first week, you can see the attendance at elementary as well as at secondary. We did hammer out today some guidelines around secondary grading practices. Elementary was already pretty clear, they would continue to grade as, as they typically do. Today, we hammered out grading practices at the secondary and are, are prepared to share those. High schools will be sending them out to their students and staff and families today. And then we're continuing to work to secure those Wi-Fi ready devices. We should have hotspots arriving anytime. Megan said she tracked us today and they were on their, their, their schedule for delivery. And then we have Chromebooks that are Wi-Fi ready trickling in as well for student use. We are working to ensure that we understand what the needs really are around Wi-Fi and Wi-Fi ready devices so that we can deploy those devices to the appropriate families once they are here. So we're working on that plan to do that. You can see a little bit about the meals distributed. I will, I will tell you that Danielle in Nutrition Services was concerned that these numbers were low because it's far fewer meals than she serves during the typical school week. But you can, you also see that we're serving a lot of meals. And, and they've almost doubled from the first work, week that we were serving to what we're serving now. We are doing weekly check-ins with our students who are culturally, linguistically diverse and our students who were identified for social emotional supports from, for both staff and students. And then if you can pop over to partnerships, I do want to share with you that we did offer up, well, we were asked if Greeley Central High School could be a possible overflow location for the hospital if needed. So they do have floor plans of the site and will let us know if and when they do need our support in doing that. If, you know, it, it's not unusual for them to ask for that, should they need it. They would probably use it for what they're calling step-down patients rather than their patients that are most critical with COVID. We've also gathered equipment and supplies from our science labs and our health rooms and some of our other lab areas and have provided those to the hospitals here in Northern Colorado for additional protective, personal protective equipment. We continue to partner with the food bank and have them as a part of our food distribution, distributing to families as well. And then again, just really working hard to make sure we're communicating with the multiple agencies in our community to, so we're not duplicating resources and, and we're capitalizing on resources. Mentioned the Chromebooks. We continue to deploy Chromebooks as Chromebooks break or, or we find they're not, you know, they weren't working properly. We do have a system where our families notify the school and the school delivers a new Chromebook to the front step of, of those families. I mentioned already continuing the bond work. And then I'll just finally, the last thing that we've begun to work on last week, very seriously, a lot, we've been working on longer than that, but very seriously is just beginning to manage what we anticipate will be a budget shortfall. We do expect that next August, September, October, that we will have a budget shortfall. There will be some shortage. The county commissioners have authorized, as, you know, as they should have. So I don't mean this as criticism, have authorized for folks to be able to pay their tax bill later and not receive a penalty for doing so. And what that means to school districts is that we will receive less revenue from taxes very likely, at least in April and May, which means that, which means that we're gonna, we, we will need a plan for managing that shortfall in the fall, which I will share with you a little bit, what, what we're thinking around that. I do have a meeting with State Treasurer Dave Young later this week to talk about the treasurer's role in possibly helping us with any shortfall that we might have in the coming months, which they do have the ability to do. All right, I'm going to stop there. I've talked for a long time and see what questions you all might have right now. And then I, I do want to get in, before we, I do still want to get into next steps around planning for graduation, the end of the year, those sort of things.
Dr. Pilch, I have a question. As you are moving forward and with the understanding that there may have been some confusion about online class delivery occurring, are, how are teachers prepared to be flexible in their grading practices? Especially also when students have difficulty sharing Wi-Fi with parents who are maybe working from home, with college students working from home. I know that we at UNC are being encouraged to really, you know, be flexible with those due dates when there's complications, be flexible with grades, be compassionate. How, how is that looking at the K-12 level here in the district?
I suspect it looks really similar to that, Pepper. Andy has shared with me the plan at UNC and, and how that's rolling out. I think we have a lot of similarities in that plan. You know, it's that balance of yes, we still have expectations that you do work and that you engage in your work. And we, this should not be a time when we're penalizing students and where students' grade point averages are impacted in a negative way because we moved this online system. So it's, you know, there's, there is that balance and that dialogue. I did today, we did, today have a meeting with the high school principals around grading. And each of them were committed to working, working closely with their staff and especially with their seniors to ensure that there's not unwarranted penalties here and that, that we're flexible around the grading practices is around, as well as around the possibility of giving pass/fail grades if needed, incompletes if needed, and, and really working to not penalize students as, as much as possible. And at the same time, not saying, okay, your third quarter grade is your grade because then the end of the year is over. But my greatest hope is that, you know, we won't see any student whose grade drops more than one letter grade. Would be my greatest hope and I am really the goal that we're working toward.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Pilch? I, I concur with Mrs.
Dr. Pilch, I concur with Mrs. Mueller about the equity and access thing. And I appreciate you answering that. One of my questions is, as you evaluated the FTEs for all of our schools, are you thinking about possible budget shortfalls in making those decisions? Or are you moving just according to how we've done it the last few years?
Well, we kept staffing very flat, meaning no, we did not increase staffing over where we staffed this year. And we have told them no new staff. So any new positions people were asking for, we have said, you know, that's not going to be a possibility. So by flat, what I mean is flat system wide. So we may have a school that is growing. So if that school requires more FTE, then that FTE needs to come off of another school that where the enrollment is declining. And so we're working hard to do that and to hold it, you know, to hold it pretty steady over where we are this year. I do think we very likely could be looking at cutting positions. Of course, we'll look first to positions that are already open. And as any administrative professional technical position comes open in the district, we're in that place again where we're saying, is this a position we absolutely need to fill? And is there another way that we can still do this work if we don't fill this position? Some of the things that I think we'll be able to hold on, you know, we did have, we had planned, we've been moving money over to capital projects that is not all mill levy override money and been using that money for some things like parking lots. So we do have some parking lot work that's planned that we will probably put on hold and hold those dollars. We have asked all of our principals to hold on spending other than critical items or items that are already, dollars that are already encumbered. So we've asked them to stop spending at this point so we can have as much carryover as possible.
I have a question. So we just went over what we were talking about as far as our priorities and stuff. So under strengthening partnerships, where is something that we're, what we're doing for parents in this COVID work?
Thanks, Tronda. You know what? That should be here. I apologize that it is not. It's a great point. I think the really big work with parents is contacting them regularly and reaching out to them at elementary. Every teacher is reaching out to their child, their child, their students, the student or the family at least twice a week and having a face to face conversation or a voice to voice conversation on the phone. So that's big work we've been doing with parents. The other piece has been pushing out information around best practices around online learning and how to support your child in online learning. And then really, a lot of our support staff, their work is actually, they're the ones engaging with families. So one of the things that, one of the changes we made right away was stop the robo calls around attendance. If students are being marked absent, we need a human to call the parent and have a conversation with the parent around, you know, why is the student not engaged? What does a student need to be engaged? You know, what's missing here? I will tell you, I, go ahead, President Matthews.
I was just going to say, I get a lot of emails from teachers. So I don't know if Hillary gets more calls or whatever. But yeah, there's a lot of communication happening between, because I guess what we're sending students, the parent is also getting as well. So yeah, in my experience, doing a good job reaching out to parents, at least via email and keeping them up to date on what's happening with their kids.
I think teachers and administrators are figuring out what is the best way to communicate with families. For some families, they know email isn't the best way to do that. And so they know it's, you know, it's a voice to voice phone call or it's text messaging. So lots of different tools being used at this time. So up next, you know, just to continue to ensure equity and access. And so our really big work right now is really nailing down who are the children who do not have access to the internet and making sure we really understand that in their home. You know, are they having to go to another location to get internet? Another family member or maybe to their parents' work? So really, we really need to nail that down and we need to nail it down family by family so that we can ensure that we're granting access to those families. We do have, I think, 240 or something families who we have pushed out paper and pencil work to those families because we know they have said to us, we're not, we can't be on the internet, we're not going to do it on the internet. In some cases, families have not, you know, they don't allow their children to be on the internet. So we're making accommodations for that. But that's our really big work right now is making sure we have a good handle on that and we're addressing that need. We are still asking for fall testing for PSAT and SAT to occur. We haven't heard yet from the college board on that. I think the state is still pushing on that with the college board. We know that we've got to have a plan for transitioning back to brick and mortar, whether that's this spring or next fall or sometime in the summertime. We've got to have a plan for what that looks like for staff and for students. So that's work that we've begun and still have a lot of work to do around that. I mentioned the budget impact for the spring. I do want to share with you that very likely we will bring you at our next board meeting, some language, or the following board meeting, some language though, this spring, around the ability to spend from our Tabor reserves, which is a piece of what we're being recommended to do from the state. So Megan will be putting that together. It's not ideal. Spending into our reserves may impact us in our next bond sale. But this is a time when you do look to spend into your reserves when you've had a crisis or an emergency. And so we will be looking to do that. We're also looking, as I mentioned earlier, to provide other places where we can make budget cuts in the 2021 budget and to conserve as much as we can in order to be able to keep the promises that we have made to our folks in our community, including our staff. Still planning on summer school, but we've slowed down a little bit on that knowing that probably, you know, our energy right now is best spent on what we're doing right now. And then really rethinking, what does summer school mean? Is that June? Is that July? Is that August? What does that summer school look like in terms of what we've had with the kids having been out, you know, now for this period of time? We have slowed and canceled much of our summer professional development. We have canceled most of the travel that our staff would incur elsewhere. We've held back on that and canceled that. And we're continuing to talk about what does summer professional development look like for the district? And really just waiting on that decision of whether or not we'll be back this spring or not in brick and mortar. Which leads me to that decision about brick and mortar after, you know, after we get to May 1. So what we know right now is the governor has said no, no brick and mortar. Schools are open until the end of the month. But I had hoped we might have an answer on that this week. I don't know after his comments today if it may yet be another week before we hear what the governor is going to recommend about round brick and mortar. We have begun, so I'm going to come back to that because I want your input on that. But I want to tell you where we are with graduation. We did put out a survey to students and parents of seniors. And overwhelmingly, students do not want an alternative graduation that is virtual this spring. They really want us to postpone if at all possible and do a later graduation. They don't want it to be next spring with the class of 2021. They were very clear about that in the results. But they do want a ceremony if at all possible at a later date. So I think that would mean looking to late July, early August as a possibility. We have not yet canceled graduation ceremonies. We would wait to do that until such time if we were to make the decision to close schools for the remainder of the year. That's when we would then make the decision to cancel graduation ceremonies. We are working to develop a class of 2020 recognition video, celebration video for each of the high schools. Teresa and the rest of communications team is working with the high schools to put those together. So students will have something this spring to take with them and to celebrate. We are working on, I mean, there's just a lot of work to do around this piece of how do you actually check seniors out? How do you get them? We've got to get them their caps and gowns and figure out getting them their caps and gowns in a safe way without having more than 10 people gather and maintaining that social distancing. We also know we need to get transcripts to students as the end of the year comes, as is seniors. But then as we think about on down the other grade levels, we know we have students who want to get back in buildings and clean out their lockers and clean out their desks and get their things from their classroom. We have teachers who want to get back into the building. So we know those are all decisions that we will have to make and figure out plans to resolve should we not return to brick and mortar this year. So again, you know, just a lot of appreciation and thanks for staff and to the community for all that everyone is doing to make this happen. Thank you to you all as a board of education. Thank you for your video. People appreciated it. I had conversations this weekend with a few teachers just checking in and teachers appreciated the video. So I want to thank you all for doing that. I think that was a great idea. I think it worked out really well. So thank you. So with that, what other questions you have? And then what recommendations or advice do you have as we continue to respond to this emergency? And primarily, I'm looking, you know, if you feel strongly that we need to make a decision sooner than the governor around the closing of the school for the remainder of the year, I need to hear that from you all. Where I am right now is, I think, and I'm going to talk tomorrow, I think, or Wednesday with the other superintendents in Weld County. But I think I'm aware where we have been is, you know, we have a good plan right now and it's okay to wait a little bit longer should there be hope of even coming back that last week of school. But if you are hearing and are worried that people are having to wait, I know I have an email from a parent of a senior who said, when will you make a decision about graduations? We have announcements in a venue for our graduation party. And so I welcome your input and feedback on all of these pieces. And with that, I'm ready, I'm ready to hear from you all.
Are we going in a certain order?
Sure. We'll just, we'll just give everybody a chance to speak. Mr. Haley, do you have any thoughts?
You know, I'm, like everybody, I'm very appreciative of everything that you and your cabinet and all of our staff and parents and students have done in this very challenging time. And everybody deserves kudos. The new normalcy is going to be very interesting and I don't think we can predict what's going to occur. I am perfectly fine waiting on the decision concerning school being closed or in graduation. I want you to work with Dr. Wallace and to ensure what's best for the safety and health of all involved. And I think that's probably the most important thing. And I will look forward to hearing to the discussions in future meetings.
Ms. Mueller.
You know, it's so hard to give guidance when we just don't know how this virus is going to proceed. I know that people are itching to get back to life as we used to know it. And I am content to wait for a little bit more guidance from the governor. I can understand parents and families. I think if it were my own kid and we were in that situation, I'd probably hedge my bets and guess that graduation may be canceled. But, you know, hope springs eternal and we hope that something magical will happen in the next month. So I don't, I don't know. I don't have really good advice for you on this. I think it's imperative for us to model good behavior of adhering to shelter in place orders and adhering to social distancing. We've had lots of problems up here in Weld County and we can't deny that many people have not behaved with the appropriate safety and, you know, wearing masks and staying apart from family gatherings and whatever the case may be. And I think that that only prolongs this. So if we have to make that call that we don't return, I feel content that we have discussed it and weighed all those options and it's for the best interest of the health and wellbeing of our staff and our students and their families. I do feel very profoundly sad for our seniors. And I feel that there's no way to replace what you've missed. But to have a later graduation date and to make it just a wonderful event is, I think, a good solution. And so, you know, if that is what we need to do, that is what we need to do. That's really kind of where we're at, I think, is just making these end of year decisions. And I don't have really a strong opinion yet, but I think we do need to decide in the next week or so probably. So that's where I sit.
Thanks, Pepper. Ms. Pappas.
I don't disagree with anything that's been said. I trust, I trust your conversations that you're having with Dr. Wallace and the governor. And I feel strongly that we should wait for the governor to make a decision. I feel like that, I feel like that's what we need to do as a community and as a state. I do feel that even if we don't go back to bricks and mortars, if we're still in the stay at home, if we can figure out any way at all to stagger kids going in and getting their things and staff going in and getting their things, even if it's, you know, 10, 10, and we're still doing the social distancing and wearing masks, I think that that would, I think that's really important for kids, especially kids that are leaving in those transition years. So I feel like that's something that, you know, maybe, maybe it happens not that last week of school. Maybe it happens the first week of June or whenever we can do that. But I feel like that is, I feel like that's really, really important for our kids, for our families, for our staff. So I trust, I trust in you. I trust in the conversations that you're having. And as far as graduation, yeah, I mean, if we can postpone it. Part of me thinks that, I don't think May 20th, when we start to have graduations, we really want to have that many people together for graduation ceremonies. So I don't know what that looks like either, but I trust you. I know you're making the decisions.
Ms. Elise.
So I wish I could be as optimistic, but I'm not. Weld County has huge amounts of numbers. We have not been doing well in the Greeley Evans area as far as doing what we're supposed to be doing. And with the debacle that's going on at JBS right now, I am concerned that we are going to have even more cases. The county has said that we've had two deaths from JBS. I've heard from other elected officials that it's more like four. And I just had another elected official tell me that her father's friend just passed away. So that would make it five. So I am really, really concerned with what's going on at JBS. There's a lack of testing, so we don't even know how many people at JBS have it. And the fact that it's such a large employer in our community and that we have several parents that work there. A lot of refugee parents work there and a lot of Latino families have parents and relatives that work there. So I am really, really concerned with this JBS situation. I don't think we should have a virtual graduation. I'm glad that the students were able to voice their opinion and we would make that decision according to what they wanted. But yeah, I would want them to have a normal ceremony and I see that happening later, later on. I don't see us returning to bricks and mortar just because of what's going on in JBS and the county. I think that the governor has pretty much said in not a specific statement, but more than likely, we won't return. And so the fact that our county is so high, I would say more than likely, we are not going to continue the school year. And I would be totally for us not doing that. And so if we could start looking at plans for that to happen, I would appreciate that. And I do feel like there's lots of parents concerned and, you know, already making plans. plans for graduations. And so the sooner we can give them that information, the better they can start planning for their families and, and celebrating with their, their kiddos. So I wish I could be more optimistic, but this stuff with JBS just really has me concerned. And JBS is not following through on their end and there isn't any, um, elected officials that can actually hold them accountable right now. They're doing the best that they can, but it is just barely winding down and testing has stopped. They had one day of testing and they haven't, they don't have a new plan for, for testing. So I am really concerned with that. We have a lot of community members that have had family members that have been affected. There's people that are, worked there, have been told to go home, but haven't been tested. So they don't even know if they've had COVID. And so if the plant closes, you're going to have all these people at home that don't even know if they have it or not. And are they going to be isolated or are they going to be out in our grocery stores? Or are they going to be infecting our kiddos? What that looks like, I have no idea. So I'm not as optimistic, unfortunately.
Mr. Tally.
I think for the, for the most part, I, I, I agree with Rhonda. I think that it, waiting for the governor to make his call, um, might be too late for some of our families. Um, I mean, graduation, we're looking at is about a month away. And so to, to be able to allow the families to plan, um, something that whatever they can for their kids to make it a special day for them, um, I think is super important. And I, and yeah, I just, I think Weld County right now, we're just a hotspot in the state and I, and I am nervous, um, that how many asymptomatic, uh, individuals we have in the community and, and how many that just don't have access to testing right now. Um, and if we were to return in two weeks, it, it would, it would just, it would, to me, it would, it would make me nervous, um, to say and selfishly to send my kid back to school, not knowing for sure if we're in a good spot for that. As far as recommendations, I, I would, I would, I would like us to just roll it out and, and call, call school off, but come to school back early in August. Um, whether that's, that's, um, volunteer, don't, I mean, I don't, I don't know. I, I think that if we could have that a plan so that transition back to school, um, is there for people and, and to show us that we're, that, that we're, we're working to, to try and make it, um, as, um, is it, I don't know. It's hard. It's a hard conversation to have because on one side, I want my kid to be able to go back into the school to see his teachers and I want the teachers to be able to see their students, um, and check on them. But I also, the safety, I think is, is just, it's too high. The risk is too high right now.
Thanks, Ray. I, I don't know that I have any specific recommendations. I'm, I'm not optimistic either in terms of just looking at the numbers. Uh, but I, I do appreciate giving teachers hope, uh, and kids hope and to not take away, take that away too, too quickly. I do, I do think we all know something, you know, from, from the governor. I mean, and I, I just think he will try to make that call sooner rather than later. So I think we're fine to wait, uh, wait another week before making, making any calls, um, until we have to. I think we're, now that we're past other districts, um, going and calling things off. I don't, I don't know if there's any urgency right now to call it. Except for, for graduations, I, I, um, as soon as we know something on graduations, and that does seem hard, even, uh, more difficult to gather that many people, uh, together. I think when we know something, we can go ahead and, uh, and make a call on that for those, for those families. But, but I would say we, we need to know not just that we're canceling, but what are, what we are going to do. We're not doing, what we're not doing and then what, what we are doing. We're postponing it to, to we think this date or this date or whenever that, that may be. Or we are sending cap and gown or we are, uh, waiting to do that or whatever, whatever you decide on that. Sounds like you got some really good information from, from parents and students and I appreciate you reaching out to them, doing that. Um, I think their, their opinions are, are far more important than ours, uh, on, on that one. So I think that's all the ad- advice, uh, have on that, but. Dr. Pilch is there, whatever, what else do you have for us on, uh, on this particular?
I just want to clarify, my team was, um, texting me and saying, I want to just clarify the memo that went out today about grading just went to high school parents. Uh, we, I think it's, I think K eight is clear that we've continued to grade and we'll, our grading practices are the same that they have always been around, um, standards and, and those pieces. So that was really a high school communication day. I just want to be clear about that. I don't know, I, I don't know that I was clear about that. Um, and I guess the other thing, you know, I don't know, well, we have been in this meeting, um, that I did see pop up on my screen from the Tribune that JBS has been shut down until April 24th at least. Um, and that the health, the, the health department issued an order regarding that is, is what, I haven't read the article, but I saw it pop up on the screen as a news alert. So, um, that's, I don't, that's probably not surprising, um, to, to us. Um, at the same time, it's, it's a big action to, to have taken in our community.
So I think they haven't totally closed it. They'll be winding down, so they still have employees that will be showing up for the next couple of days. Um, so I'm not quite sure how they're doing this. Um, there's some information going out to employees that, uh, it's their choice to go to work or not. And so there's a lot of misinformation out there. So I, I don't trust JBS's process in this, unfortunately. And so, um, I think there's going to be employees that actually do try to show up for work.
Dr. Pilch, what else? Uh, do you need anything else from us on, um?
No, I think just, just keep letting me know what you're hearing and, and, um, what your worries are. And we're going to, you know, we're going to keep working as a staff on, uh, if we're not back in session, what are those pieces we have to have in place, including is there any way to bring people back into the building? The last conversation I had with Mark Wallace, he didn't want us to do anything that allowed people to walk into our schools. Um, he just felt like that was really risky, that we didn't, we don't have the ability to manage the disinfecting that would be needed and to manage the numbers of people that we might need to manage. So I, you know, I'll continue to work close with Mark about that and I appreciate your comments around that. Um, Ms. Pappas, I, I mean, I know as soon as we say school is not coming back, one of the first questions is going to be, you mean, I don't get to see my kids before, my students before the end of the year? I mean, that, how do kids even close the year out without coming back into the building? So, um, you know, this is a tough one. This is really, really a tough one. And, um, I know we're looking to, uh, probably clear out Jackson and Martinez earlier. And so we do, if we plan to do that, so we can do the construction there, we will have to have a plan for at least staff to get back in there and to, to get, pack it, to pack their things and, and get their things secured in small, you know, with small groups going in. Um, the last conversation I had with Dr. Wallace, he's just really disappointed in how our community has handled and not handled, social distancing and followed the stay at home order. I mean, he's just really concerned about that and just really feels like there's a real lack of understanding of how serious this is and significant it is and what it really means to social distance from each other. Um, and to stay at home. So I don't want to do something that we, you know, we make this worse. Yeah. So, but I'll say, you know, we'll stay in touch and we'll keep talking about it over the next few days and see what is issued in our community and, and what the governor issues as well. And, um, we'll know when it's the right time. I appreciate all of your comments, all of you. Thank you.
Well, let's, let's debrief our work session. And we, we can start in, in reverse order this time. Uh, Mr. Tally, how you feel about the work session?
Yeah, I went, honestly, the most painful thing was having to sit here and stare at myself and see how much I need a haircut. Um, it's, it's been bothering the heck out of me, but overall of this, this work session, I thought was, was very, it, it was very beneficial and it was very informative. Um, I think we have a pretty good plan, um, moving forward. And I think it, it'll, it's sparked some conversations in my own head about, um, what to think about and really what to look at and be more intentional about researching here in the future. I did just real quick, want to say that I, that our video that was made is actually being shared in South Dakota as well, um, between three school districts. So it, a, a lot of school districts are following suit and I think that it's, that District Six is doing amazing, uh, work with communicating with the community. So it's just amazing to see the, the work that's happening and, and to go through these work sessions and know that we're having the conversations about where a district's going to go, um, in the future and really involving everyone at the table that, while that's here right now at least, but really, um, including the community and on these conversations.
Sorry, I had to decline a, a, a call from District Six coming through, um, about the, uh, the communication you just mentioned, Dr. Pilch. Uh, uh, Ms. Solis.
So I wanted to thank Ray for his suggestion for us even doing the video. That was a great suggestion. Thank you. Um, and you know, I have a beard, so you know, that's good. Just want to thank everybody. I know this is a tough time and, you know, I just feel like District Six has still been that beacon in this community of doing things and trying to do the right thing and doing it well. And so I just commend our staff and everyone and all the updates that we got in this meeting. I just continue to be District Six proud. Uh, thank you, Dr. Pilch. This, I'm sure weighs on you and I'm not sure if you get a lot of sleep at night, but please know we're here to support you and you've been doing a great job. And thank goodness that you are our superintendent. So thank you, everybody. I hope everyone is staying safe and healthy and, um, please reach out if you need anything. I've been doing my part staying at home, so I think of you all. I miss you all. I miss seeing you and, you know, smack and John and stuff. Um, so hopefully we will get back to all of this soon, but I, I appreciate us doing our part as a, as a school board and making sure that, you know, kids are taken care of and that families are taken care of. So thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Solis. Ms. Pappas.
Well, I was thinking, I don't know if anyone noticed that my hair turned gray during this time, so I don't know if you noticed that or not. Uh, but I, um, agree with everything. I, I can't even tell you how, um, proud I am to be District Six. And also even though I'm saying things like, yes, I would like the kids to have that opportunity, please understand that I, I don't want anything to be too soon. And I think that the more that we can, um, as a school board and as a community, we can just put it out there to stay at home and, and wear your masks. I, it, it is so disappointing and it is so sad that we are just, it, there's just this nonchalant attitude about it. And so I don't know if anyone's listening. I don't know if, um, John Gates is listening, but if anybody can just put it out more and more and more so that people understand that. Um, but I appreciate all of you. I appreciate the work that was done tonight. And, um, if we do a half day work session, which I think we should do for the strategic plan, um, I know it's a lot of planning and I know it's a lot of work to do that in a virtual way to have us do this consensus. Um, but, um, I'm all, I'm all about having a half day work session. So thank you, Dr. Pilch. Thank you to all of you and thank you to all of the staff members. How about you?
Thank you, Ms. Pappas. Ms. Mueller.
Well, I just echo what everyone said. I'm really, um, proud of our administrative staff, our teachers, our parents, our students that are keeping up the good work of learning and delivering education virtually. I know this isn't the way we all would love to have these meetings and, and have our education unfold. And if nothing else, I'm hoping this virus can help us appreciate one another even more fully and, um, enjoy that time when we can come back together and meet in person. I do want to, um, make sure that everyone is taking care of themselves and that, Dr. Pilch, you're not, um, working yourself into exhaustion. So make sure that wellness is a, a key feature of all of our lives. It is, it is, uh, definitely an issue for our own social emotional wellness to be isolated from one another and from our families and from our students and the community. So, uh, just everyone, keep up the good work, but take care of yourselves as well. And, um, thank you to my fellow board members that, um, you're intelligent and responsive and compassionate people. And I think our community sees that, so I appreciate it.
Thanks, Pepper. Mr. Haley.
As I'm not very social, this has been incredibly easy for me and, and it's been great to be just inside my house and going for walks. I, I do miss being struck by Ms. Solis. Mr. Tally, I did comb my hair. Ms. Pappas, I don't know if I have gray hair or not. Ms. Mueller, I don't have much to abuse you about. Um, Dr. Pilch, I concur with what Ms. Mueller said. Uh, you need to really take care of yourself as does your, uh, cabinet and all of our staff members in this really, really challenging time. And, you know, as, as I look at Rhonda and Ray and Michael and Terry and, and Pepper and Natalie who's not here, I've sat on a lot of boards and committees in my life. And I feel very, very fortunate and blessed to work with such dedicated people who care about our students and our parents and our staff. And I know that when normalcy returns, that we'll be on top and we'll continue to do a good job. So thanks to each of you. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Haley. Mr. Tally, I would, uh, just encourage you to go on Amazon and get you some clippers. I, I cut my hair about a week ago, so you know, it, you can do it. Now, I appreciate, appreciate everything that Dr. Pilch said you gave us, uh, in this work session. I appreciate that we're not just, not just, I appreciate that we are focused on, on COVID-19 and response and, and, uh, all the decisions need to be made around that. But I appreciate that the, uh, the long-term vision work is, is continuing on and we're able to, uh, to do things that are going to, um, uh, that need to be done, uh, for, for the fall and, uh, that that work continues. Um, if, if we, for our next meeting work, uh, session, I would love to, to have all, all seven of us here, uh, for, for decisions around, uh, I don't know if that's, uh, an all-day work session or, um, or just, uh, a work, work group on a, even on a different day, but just sometime where we can get, get all of us for the, whenever we make decisions about those priorities that we talked about today. But no, I mean, I'm extremely encouraged. Uh, I'm not optimistic necessarily and I am sad by the, um, by the community response. And then when we go to parks and grocery stores, you still see so many people, um, being so nonchalant, but, but I am optimistic that we'll get on the other side of this and, um, you know, that we will have a graduation and that may be in August 1st, but, but we'll have a graduation and, uh, we will get our kids back, um, in, in near future. So, yeah, I'm, I'm encouraged. Uh, Dr. Pilch, did you have anything, any last words?
Uh, just thank you for all your kind comments about, um, our leadership and about our team's leadership. I, um, I am putting a lot of pressure on this team, uh, to perform at this time. So they're, you know, everybody's being expected to do what they'd normally do to keep school going, um, because all that is still happening and to respond to this emergency. And I, so I am, I have put a lot of pressure on this team. And so I thank you for recognizing them. Um, I thank you for appreciating their efforts. Um, we are all, you know, it's funny, uh, we all are managing the stress in different ways, um, but I think we all recognize the importance of taking care of ourselves. So, I mean, we are, we are doing that. Um, and Ray, Mike, Michael is right. I ordered, uh, clippers, uh, from Walmart.com for my husband. And I, so I will be cutting his hair here when they arrive tomorrow. So we'll see how that goes for him. Um, but I, I think, um, uh, I do want to say this as I close. And I said this to Ray today on the phone and I, I really do believe this. I believe when we all come out of this, education will have taken a significant shift in a way, um, that will really benefit personalizing learning for students in a way that we could have never done had we not had this crisis that moved forced teachers into this new way of interacting and forced parents to. forced teachers into this new way of interacting and forced parents to allow us into their living rooms and their kitchens and their hallways. And I, I do think because of this, we, we will have a, 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 a new, a new way of, of learning and teaching and interacting with kids that will benefit education for years to come. And had we not had this emergency, we would have, we would not have gotten here as quickly as we needed to. So I think that's, that's the bright side of this. I do think education's going to be better because of this. We have been used to rows of chairs and brick and mortar for a very, very long time. Um, and this, this has changed the way we do business and I think that'll be very good for kids in the future. Pepper's got her, her kid with her. Yeah. That's good. Oh, so does Rhonda. My baby was here a minute ago on the floor and I didn't pick her up because I thought it's a school board meeting, dra, dra. Don't pick your dog up. I appreciate you all very much and I appreciate your support. Don't hesitate to reach out and call, text. Um, let me know that, the things you're hearing in the community and the questions. I, I had some great conversations this weekend with teachers and um, we uh, oh, I, I don't, did I tell you that we surveyed teachers about how it's going and what their needs are? I should have told you that. That's new. We just finalized that today. So it wasn't in the PowerPoint, but we, we are surveying teachers um, about how this is going and, you know, how much time they're spending doing the different pieces and, and what their needs are so that um, as we go into the next several weeks, we can adjust if we need to. It's funny, you will hear elementary teachers say, I think we should be doing it the way high school teachers are. You will hear high school teachers say, I think we should be doing it the way elementary is. And you'll hear lots of people say, uh, you know, it's going really well now that I've gotten my groove in. So um, you know, we're, we're collecting feedback from staff. Wes just sent a chat in saying that four hundred and fifty-six teachers have already responded. So that's going to give us some great data about how we, we go forward um, after April twenty-fourth, because we pushed out the online work through April twenty-fourth and now we've, we, you know, we know we at least have to have one more week of planning, if probably not four more weeks of planning. So we'll keep you posted.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Pilch. And that'll, that'll conclude our, our meeting um, in the interest of everybody's wellness. Go, um, go get dinner. And um, we, we will see you guys soon.
Thank you all. Bye-bye.